So, good. Recording in progress. Here we go. Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And it is the Reg- Reg- Regular Board Me- Meeting of the Odd- Oddalanto Elementary School Dist- District. So, one point zero, zero-two can call to order. I just did that. One point zero-three. Roll, roll call and quorum estab- establishment. Trustee Akas.
Uh, present.
Trustee La French, uh, she was, she's running behind. Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, present.
Trustee Webster.
Trustee Webster, present.
Trustee Benz. And Benz is present and the, the time is five thirty. Thirty, okay. So, one point zero, zero-four. Can we, we please do, uh, stand for the pledge of allegiance, allegiance, please? Okay, place your right, right hand, oh, oh, over your heart and red, ready, be begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so let's go on to, uh, adopt, adoption of the, uh, gen- agenda, two point zero, zero-one. Per- proposed, uh, additions, deletions and adjust- adjustments in the order of biz- business. Madam President, we don't have any.
Okay, Madam President, um, this is Trustee Turner. Um, I understand that we, the board is hearing an expulsion in closed session. Um, with case number twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two dash sixteen. I was looking at the agenda and there's no place for the board to officially vote in public to, um, uh, make the final vote on this student.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm asking that we add a section so we can, um, make that vote accordance with, um, ed code.
Okay, all right. So, I think we should, yeah, cuz we've done, done that in the past. And I take part in this cuz I should have caught, caught that. It's just been so, so long that I forgot. So, okay, we'll add that in there. Would that be? We'd have that in at what, um? Fif- fifteen?
Where do we generally, I know we generally do it right after, um, we could do it right after Governor Board meetings, reports and announcements. Before we do the minutes, uh, Mrs. LeVey, where do we generally put that? I know it's the last, I sent you, uh, a copy.
Yeah, you're correct. It would be eleven. So we would go ahead, uh, do eleven A and eleven B will be the, uh, adoption of the minutes.
Okay. So, eleven A. Would be the expulsion.
Correct.
Vote. Okay. Thank you. And yeah, I, I missed that, that one. Cuz we, 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 we do, do, did discuss in, in the closed and we vote in the open. So, okay, all right. Yes.
I would like to point out that Trustee Love French has joined the meeting.
Okay, great.
The time is five thirty-four. Uh, welcome, Trustee La French.
Yes. Five thirty-four. All right. Is she in, in?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, awesome.
I just couldn't unmute myself before the pledge of allegiance.
No, all great. No, well, welcome. I'm glad, I'm glad you're here. You know, cuz we missed you. All right, so those, uh, two point oh-one is done. So we're gonna move that to eleven A. Okay, so let's go on to two point zero, zero-two, adop- adoption of the, uh, gen- agenda. Can, can I get a motion, please?
Trustee Turner, I motion to adopt the agenda with, uh, added, um, agenda item.
Okay.
Akas, I second.
Thank you. And can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Akas.
Aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Webster.
Aye.
Trustee Benz.
And Benz, I mo- motion pass, passes five zero. Zero, zero. Okay, so three is special, special rec- rec- recognitions. Uh, Doc- Dr. Mitt- Mitta.
Thank you, Trustee. It's a good, good evening, board. Uh, we're excited to, uh, share a few recognitions of our staff and students. Uh, with the community and want to celebrate, uh, some accomplishments by some staff and students. And so I'll turn it over at this time to, uh, Mr. Quintero, Public Information Officer. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good evening, President Benz, trustees, superintendent Dr. Mitchell, cabinet members, staff, students and our guests. Uh, yes, I am Stephen Quintero, the Public Information Officer. And it's definitely an honor here to be here tonight to recognize the students and staff here in the Adelanto Elementary School District. Who have demonstrated academic and athletic excellence. Uh, to become a champion, it takes dedication, focus, practice, teamwork and trust. We recognize students and staff who will always bear the title of champions. Those three champions are the Melva Davis Academy of Excellence Boys Basketball Team. The Mesa Linda Middle School Girls Basketball Team. And the History Day Participants from Victoria McGathen Elementary School. Uh, President Benz, I will read the names of students and staff involved with all three championships first and then hand the floor over to you for comments.
Okay.
All right, so first, uh, our students, to our student athletes and our academic champions, uh, when I, please feel free to wave and, uh, when I call your name out, uh, so we can, uh, recognize you. Uh, we should have an ability to see all of our, uh, uh, participants tonight in Zoom right now. Uh, so first, congratulations to the Melva Davis Academy Excellence Boys Basketball Team for winning the twenty twenty-two High Desert Athletic League Championship. Uh, the principal of Melva Davis is Kathy Yuskovich. And the Titans are coached by Daniel DeFrone, Ray Bennett, Greg Murdock and Brandon Rogers. Thank you, coaches. And the champion student athletes are Max Beherano, Randy Bevins, Ricky Carmona, Nick Kraft, Axel Nzunza. Z Malvo, Press Manriquez, Ethan Mitchell, Eric Sotello, Yuri Venable. And Josiah Williams. So, great job Titans, way to go, awesome season.
That's great.
Now, we'd like to give congratulations to the Mesa Linda Middle School Girls Basketball Team for winning the twenty twenty-two High Desert Athletic League Championship. The principal of Mesa Linda is Dr. Antonia Hunt. Uh, the Bulldogs are coached by Golden Cruz and John T. Thompson. So, great job, coaches. The champion student athletes are Anika Baptiste, Kalise Carlton. Anaya Daniels, Tasan- Tasana Estes, Malia Franklin. Imaya Johnson, Sarah Powell. Bella Riccon, Justice Stubbs, Michaela Valdi. Maya Wilson and Shania Wilson. And as always, Bulldogs are number one. So, congratulations to both basketball teams. We're definitely proud and excited. So, our third championship, we're very proud of our students from Victoria McGathen. Uh, the Tigers had six students named champions in the thirty-second annual San Bernardino County History Day Competition. Uh, the students will advance to the State of California History Day Competition that will be held in May in Northern California. So that's pretty exciting for our district. I'd also like to acknowledge all of those who assisted in supporting, coaching and mentoring these champions of history. So, the principal of Victoria McGathen is Alex Verduco. The district coordinator for the competitions is Lori Latimer, Curriculum Coordinator, Academic Services. And the coaches are David Chow, teacher at Victoria McGathen, and Ruby Sandoval, teacher at Victoria McGathen. So, thank you, teachers. This year's, uh, historical theme for the competition, this is a big one, debate and diplomacy in history, successes, failures, consequences. Our champions are the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo, eighteen forty-eight, the Individual Elementary Grade Poster Award, Ariana Flores. Congratulations. The Trial of Tears, Individual Elementary Grade Poster Award, Oliver Nieto. Congratulations, Oliver. And then the Elementary Grade Poster for a group went to four students. The Annexation of Hawaii was the report. Lizette Acosta, Mariah Batista, Alisa Garcia and Taj Thomas. So, great job, you guys. Way to go. We're definitely very proud of these students to exemplify some of the best and brightest in AESD. We also wanted to do a couple of thank yous here. First and foremost, a special thank you to Talk, Dr. Tasha DeWisen, the Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services. For supporting the co-curricular and extracurricular activities at all of our school sites. These learning opportunities enrich the educational experience for our students. So that, thank you, Dr. DeWisen. And then we also want to give a special thank you, uh, the family members, for you supporting your child, for you supporting your teachers. Uh, for allowing us to educate them and in, and give them the best possible educational endeavor that we can with the Adelanto Elementary School District. So, thank you to the family members, parents, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles. It, it takes a village, as they say. So, thank you very much. I'm gonna turn the floor over to President Benz.
Uh, first thing, I am beyond the moon, beyond the moon, proud of our teams. Beyond the moon for, 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 for our, our girls at Mesa Lin- Linda. And the boys team at Mel- Melva Dave- Davis, you know. And, you know, Miss, Mr. Ver- Verdu- Dusco, you have some really sharp stu- students there in your class. And as excited as I am for your achieve- achievements, I think it's safe to say, I'm not surprised. Cuz we really know you guys are out there and we know you guys can, can just a- achieve things beyond what you yourselves think. So, I'm like, yeah, of course they, they, they won. Because why, why not? Our dis- district has some very dead dedicated te- teachers, co- coaches, parent, principals. But more and importantly, stu- students and parent, parents. Because that takes a great dead dedication to do the things and to complete the things that you, you did. And on behalf of the board, we are so proud, we are so geared, guiddy. And I have goose, goosebumps because I'm just so excited, excited. And thank you for your hard, hard work and for rep- representing our school dis- district. So, we're all proud. Everybody, handshake. Yay! You guys were awesome. Okay, let me get, get back into the thing cuz I'm like, yay, I gotta get back to, to work. But I'm so excited and I'm ser- serious. I got, okay, so here we go. Thank, thank, thank you, guys. All right, so close sess- session de- declarations, we will, will be ta- taking i- items. Four point zero, zero-two and four point zero-six into close sess- session. And let me go on to five, the pub- public test, testimony, money be, be for close session. Doc- Dr. Mitt- Mitt- Mitchell.
Thank you. Uh, the public comment period is, is administered by state law and is appointed to meetings set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Over-meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue, answer questions, to help well-being, save, and help safety of community members, public officials. And employees is a top priority for Adelanto Elementary School District, consistent with the shelter-in-place orders from the governor and some of your county board members and staff. And participate in this meeting via Zoom. This meeting is in compliance with the governor's executive order, AB three-six-one. Uh, which will provide both legislative bodies with the continued flexibility to meet remotely without hearing to all the brown acts teleconferencing rules during a claimed state of emergency. But with the following key limitations, one, public comment must be allowed in real time. And two, if there are technological issues, the, the meeting must be stopped and no vote or other official actions can be taken to the public. Uh, can once again participate in the proceedings. Call calls for speakers, any person who wishes to address the governing board on closed session agenda items must only complete and submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda will be heard only during the public comment or not, or non-agendized items, period. Once a part of me is overcome, this will only be taken on agenda items during discussion of both items. The board values public comments and although we cannot take action or discuss items out on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be, uh, cut off for exceeding a lot of time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you're cut off or worn last time, please consider that your warning. Any visible speakers are allowed to remiss or address the board on each closed session agenda items. The board, there is a time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a call of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that staff, that additional person speak only if they have something to add. Thank you, Trustee Benz.
Thank you. Do we have an, any, um, rep, rep- present senators from A, 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 D, DTA?
Um, not at this time, but we do have four speakers for, for closed session item.
Okay.
Four, four point oh-five. So, uh, the board welcomes Carissa Coke. It's Coke, you man, mute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees and cabinet. My name is Carissa Coke and I'm a teacher at Melva Davis. As I'm sure you've noticed, prices for everyday items have increased drastically in the last year. In fact, gas is at fifty-two percent, eggs are twenty-three percent more expensive and milk costs thirty-eight percent more than this time last year. Overall, inflation is up seven point nine percent before the drastic uptick following the onset of the war in Ukraine. We are asking for four percent. We've done the math, the money is there. The cost of living increase this year was five point oh-seven percent. And funding for AST increased six point three million this year in LCFF funds alone, not counting COVID money or anything extra. This one percent difference between what has been offered and what we are asking for is approximately four hundred thousand dollars. We're asking to decrease our buying power by four percent instead of five percent. We aren't asking for a raise, not even to stay even with inflation. We aren't asking for all cola. We're just asking for four percent, which is what Victor Elementary is voting to accept today. Please take this to heart and instruct your team to offer four percent.
And, thank you. You're, you're on mute.
Thank you. Uh, the board, um, the, the board, uh, uh, acknowledges Nanette Kedili for closed session item, Nanette. You man, mute yourself. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Good evening, trustees and all in attendance. Uh, before going to close session, I wanted you to really think about what you're signing off on tonight. Uh, the district did not do their due diligence to include the union in the process of the rifts. I was told we could not be in there with legal because of confidential information. That was at the end after I was being told that I would be part of this process and then, um, I wasn't. So, uh, what kind of information is discussed for a rift process that isn't already on the seniority list? That just gives cause for suspicion. In the past, we had a committee that was part of this process and our membership rep, um, was in there. Also, our CTA was present during the meeting to inform our members. We also had plenty of time to do our part, which was to have a meeting, our own meeting, with our members to answer any questions. I was led to believe that we would be given the opportunity to look over the names and go over them with the district to make sure that everything was done correctly. The next thing I knew, our members were notified and I was told I can just look at the seniority list on my own. I didn't even get the list until Friday night at eight twenty-five PM. I feel that Mr. Moran has no intention of having transparency or having good relations with our union. My question to you is, have you looked over the list? Have you guys done your part to make sure that this process was done correctly? And I'm talking to the trustees. I would think based on past comments about how you all respect our union, that one of your questions would be to Mr. Moran, was this all run by the union? You approved a resolution that was not thoroughly thought out, mistakes after mistakes. In fact, the resolution you signed was the wrong one, error everywhere. None of this sits right with me. Our CTA legal is now involved because we were not allowed to be part of this process from the beginning. Should we find mistakes, the people that look bad are those that we elected. Please look into this as I asked the last time. We are holding you accountable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The board recognizes Kimberly Smith. Smith, you man, mute yourself.
Sorry, um, can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, Madam President Benz, esteemed board member, superintendent Mitchell, colleagues, friends and guests. My name is Kimberly Smith and I am a proud fifth grade teacher at Victoria McGathen Elementary School. I've been teaching for twenty-five years and I love what I do. I love to show my students my appreciation of their efforts and consistency in the classroom by always showing up and being present. I do this in any way that I can afford to and it grows into this wonderful relationship where we all receive what we have worked hard to achieve. I receive the best effort, their great attitudes, their visible excitement after grasping a concept. And most of all, I receive their gratitude for helping them to achieve many goals that they didn't even know were attainable. I go above and beyond to give them my time, my best effort, my energy and my sole attention. And I only ask for them to do what is going to make them productive citizens. I do not ask for anything in exchange that does not benefit them directly. Their successes become our successes and together we grow as a family unit that wants the very best for one another. As in every family, we do not always get along or see eye to eye. However, at the end of the day, there is a mutual respect and a high regard for the roles that each of us plays. I not only support them with the tools that they need to feel valued, appreciated and heard. I also reward them for their continued efforts to better themselves each day. I do all of these things simply because I can and they deserve it. I do not haggle with them just for the haggling sake because that would make them feel unvalued, unappreciated and unheard. It would undo all forward strides that we have struggled to make in our relationship. Unlike my students, teachers are always asked to settle for less than their worth, even though more is readily available. We are asked to go above and beyond and in return, we are forced to beg for less than our worth. It is offensive that we must fight to receive four percent, money that the state of California has already given to the district for teachers' cost of living. And all the while, being expected to accept three percent in exchange for contract language. It is disrespectful that we have to bargain at all for money that is already ours per the state of California. And we are then still expected to give up contract language. Furthermore, it is a slap in the face that we must bargain for money that the district only has because the state allotted it for teachers' cost of living. Money that is only in the district coffers because of the teachers. We are not asking for anything more than we and the state of California believe that we deserve. We treat our students as such and we deserve to be treated in the same manner. Just as I'm sure all of you want to be acknowledged for all your hard work and dedication to the vocation in which you have been called to do. Board members, I implore you to direct the district's negotiation team to set ego aside and do what is fair and equitable for the betterment of our school communities. And for the health of our teachers' morale and most importantly, the success of our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You're on mute.
The board recognizes, uh, Denise Braille. You man, mute yourself. Welcome. It's Braille.
I'm trying to. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Cabinet. My name is Denise Braille and I am a teacher at George Magnet School. I'm in my seventeenth year teaching in the Adelanto School District. I know that you've heard about how we are not paid as much as the surrounding districts. So I wanted to show you just how far apart we are. In the two thousand fifteen, sixteen bargaining year, the Adelanto School District Board, uh, School Board and Management Team committed to matching our salary. Schedule with the Victor Elementary School District. In the past six years, we have continued to fall further and further behind Victor L. salary schedule. We are now about five point two percent behind Victor Elementary. Last year, we received one percent on schedule and Victor L. received two percent on schedule and Victor Union received five percent on. This year, Adelanto is offering us three percent on and approximately one and a half percent off schedule. Victor L. just settled for four percent on and three percent off. If we continue to settle one percent or more behind the surrounding districts each year, we will be right back where we began in two thousand fifteen, sixteen. What happened to the commitment to have competitive salaries with the surrounding districts? Is that no longer the goal? Victor L. and Victor Union also both provide fully paid medical insurance. The district has taken the stance that they cannot provide us with language that covers fully paid medical because they don't know how much medical premiums will go up in the coming years. And yet, the two closest districts to us continue to fully pay their medical insurance. And somehow, these districts managed to pay the increasing medical costs to provide their employees with fully paid medical. As I can only speak for myself, I am going to illustrate the difference between what I make in the Adelanto School District and what I could make in Victor Elementary. I have twenty-one years of teaching experience and seventeen of them are in the Adelanto School District. My base salary is a hundred ten thousand, five hundred thirty-five. And Victor L. is one hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred seven. I get two professional development days for one thousand, two hundred eight dollars. My longevity, when it comes to happen in two years, will be two thousand dollars. Victor L. is five thousand. So my total salary would be a hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred forty-three. Victor L.'s is one hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred seven. In addition, Victor L. has fully paid medical and I pay two hundred ten per month for my medical. I pay two thousand, five hundred twenty out of my salary for medical each year. If I subtract that from my salary, I make one hundred eleven thousand, two hundred twenty-three. Even if I don't subtract the medical benefits, I'm presently making seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars less in salary. That is a six and a half percent less than Victor L. Wouldn't you find it insulting to make six and a half percent less in salary than another business in which you do the same exact job? We are asking to, for competitive salaries and each year, we continue to fall behind. The district continues to tell us, you and us, that they just can't afford more and I continue to ask why not? Especially as the surrounding districts continue moving forward at a much faster rate than us. We are supposed to be one of the highest paid districts in LCFF funding in the state of California. Logically, that should make it easier for us to pay us a competitive salary and benefits package. Honestly, a closer look should be taken at the district's finances and some tough questions need to be asked. We should not be this far behind the surrounding districts. It's rather embarrassing and depressing. If the surrounding districts can afford it, so should we. We are not just whining teachers complaining about something small. The salary and benefits discrepancies are huge. We look at the surround-
Oh, I'm sorry. Was her, her time, time up?
Yes, ma'am. She's elapsed three minutes.
Okay. I'm sorry, sorry, Ms. Brett, Brett. Thank, thank you.
Okay, um, that can- Yes, I can close all the closed session comments. Thank you.
Okay. Where am I? Okay, so we need to re- recess to close sess- session. Can I get a mo- motion?
Akas, I motion.
And can I get a sec- se- second?
Trustee, two second.
Okay, and I need a vote.
Trustee Akas.
Aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Webster.
She froze right at towards a few seconds ago and disappeared.
Okay, we lost Trustee Webster.
I didn't freeze.
Webster. And Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. So, it passes four zero. Is she here? Is she here? Okay, we're gonna go ahead. Four zero, 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 and I'll text texture to go straight to close. Oh, you're there.
Yeah, my iPod restarted.
Oh, perfect, perfect time, timing.
We are recessing to close session and we're taking vote. Trustee Webster?
I.
Okay, five zero.
Okay.
Before we go to a close session, can I just say that, um, the next time someone is going to be cut off, that we at least give them a warning that they're gonna be cut off?
Yeah.
Because that's rude.
Yeah, we usually do.
Okay.
We will keep that in mind. Thank you.
Let's just make that a practice. Just say, you know, your time is up, so they know.
Give them a fifteen second warning like we generally do. Let them know. Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam President, the time is six o'clock.
All right, we'll see, see you on the the other side.
Madam President, just. We're call- calling to order the meeting at seven fifty-four. I'll take roll call. It's trustee Akas.
Uh, present.
Trustee La French?
Present.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, present.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, present.
Trustee Bentz?
Bentz, per- pre- present cor- quorum is estab- established. Uh, there, there were no re- report portable a- actions take, taken in close sess- session. So I, I will go, go on to nine pub- public test- testimony. Doctor Mitchell?
Uh, that would be me. Thank you. Sorry about that. The board welcomes, uh, Lynette Cadillia, representing A D Smith.
Uh, hold on one second. Okay. Can you see me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, good evening again. Um, trustees and cabinet. Tonight, I would like to talk about our negotiations. We have yet to settle, although Victor L. is ratifying their contract this week. They are voting on a four percent on schedule, on schedule salary raise and three percent off schedule. They do not have to fight yearly for their medical because their lowest paid medical is paid fully. All of our awesome teachers who are being let go should honestly apply to that district that respects their teachers. And we have one right next door. They get fully paid medical and they understand that COLA is there to help the increasing cost of living, which they know should go back to their employees, unlike our district who makes us fight tooth and nail for crumbs. Um, I want to let you know that our executive board and our bargaining team are very reasonable people. We would never want to put the district in any financial harm. Could we have asked for ten percent? Of course. Could we have asked for seven percent? Of course. Um, do we believe that the district can afford it? Or more, can afford more than four percent? Absolutely. But we are reasonable people. We are not asking for the moon and the stars. We are asking for a fair increase in pay, four percent with absolutely no problems. So our team thought, we're not money hungry, we're not stingy people. Let's, uh, do us all a favor, ratify the contract quickly so that we can all get on with focusing on our daily duties. Hey, let's get ahead and close out these, this contract so we can bargain early for next year. That was our thinking when we went in, but all that, um, everything we've gone through this year, we keep hitting walls. I know they're telling you things are going good. We're almost there. We're almost settling. That has not been the case. What, what you are saying to us is that you deserve less than the teachers that work next door. We don't care that you have been reasonable. We are going to make sure that you know that you are not good enough and that you do not deserve the COLA that is given. How do you expect the climate to change in our district? Wouldn't it be nice if you? Wouldn't it be nice if you thought of us as being the best teachers, counselors, and nurses up here? How that mindset could change the way we feel about ourselves? That would then uplift the morale and transition into our classrooms and into our students. We have tried all approaches to negotiate what is fair for us. And what happens? Negotiations are dragged out and we are threatened with the district saying they are going to impose the calendar since we haven't agreed to their terms. What is that? Who are we dealing with here? This is not what our next-door neighbor teachers have to deal with. I feel like the times of desist, you remember him, are here again, and that was an ugly time. That's all for tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Board recognizes Dolores Williams. You may unmute yourself, Ms. Williams. Is she on mute?
No, she isn't. Dr. Mitchell, she's still muted.
Can you unmute Ms. Will Williams?
I have asked her to unmute. She needs to click the button.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell and the board members. Dr. Mitchell, Adelanto Elementary School District staff and the Board of Trustees, with deepest gratitude on behalf of Adelanto Elementary School District students and families. Thank you for approving Millionaire Mind Kids after-school STEM robotics programs contract to serve one hundred students at Adelanto Elementary and Westside Park Elementary Schools. Since two thousand and five, Millionaire Mind Kids has provided career technical education enrichment summer academies to students across Victor Valley High Desert. Our mission is to help educators to prepare college, career workforce, and military-ready students to transition into the twenty-first century workforce. Our longstanding commitments to equitable access and exposure to twenty-first century careers encourages us to focus on bridging economic, racial, and gender gaps in STEM professions, skilled occupations, and the world of demanding technically skilled and highly compensated careers. We strongly believe that the earliest exposure to STEM, the more likely and reachable these careers become for under-resourced students. Over the past years, due to various constraints and barriers, students and residents of North Adelanto have been noticeably absent from our programs. This is why serving your schools is one of our highest priorities. And we believe every child exposed, even for one day or one activity, give us the opportunity to plant important seeds that may change the trajectory of their lives. We are committed to delivering the highest-quality programs to your students. Your partnership and commitment to transform this community is monumental to us, and we are proud to be a part of it. So as we impart into every child and encourage each of you to continue to stand in your power and continue to walk through your many doors of greatness. With much appreciation, thank you for your trust in the work that we do.
Thank you, Ms. Will Williams.
The board welcomes Journey Smith. May I unmute yourself? Thank you.
Evening. Okay, sorry. Good evening, trustees, superintendents, parents, students, teachers, and all those in between. My name is Journey Smith. I'm in the eighth grade and I go to Mesa Linda Middle School. I'm here to discuss the requirements for attending Mesa Linda two thousand and twenty-two's upcoming school dance. Please note that these are my worries as a student before I proceed. You must currently have no more than five tardies this semester to attend the dance. This involves far more than simply the individual student. A car may break down or a parent could be unavowable at that moment. Teachers may also forget to excuse explainable tardies. These last few years have been difficult for all of us. This is the first year back after the school has been shut down due to COVID. Children in particular have been eager to return. As an eighth grader, I would love to have an event before moving on to high school. This is the perfect opportunity to make memories and build more friendships. Let's make it easier to attend and enjoy this event. Attending the dance may be more accessible if a two-point-oh GPA or higher is required, opposed to the five or less tardies. More students will be able to attend, and this could be a dance that is remembered for decades. Thank you for your patience and time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Smith, thank you so, so much.
So well said. Thank you, Ms. Smith. We will certainly consider your thoughts. Board welcomes Zoe Gomez. Zoe. There she goes.
Hi, my name is Zoe Gomez. I am an eighth grader and a current ASV president at Mesa Linda Middle School. We have an Oh, it's too late to start your video. Hold on.
Oh, it's okay. I mean,
Start the video.
There we go.
We have an amazing security team app, but that doesn't seem to be enough. Is it still working?
You might want to turn off your video.
There you go.
How is it now?
Yeah, better.
Hi, my name is Zoe Gomez. Hi, my name is Zoe Gomez. I'm an eighth grader and current ASV president at Mesa Linda Middle School. We have an amazing security team, but that doesn't seem to be enough. There doesn't seem to be enough of them, or they are given, or they are not given the proper resources to deal with everyday issues, as well as the vandalism on our campus. We also have students who ditch and hang out in the restrooms that the security camp mind. I feel our administration doesn't punish the students properly to fit the actions that they have done. Rather, they suspend students for three to five days just for them to come back and do those same actions. I feel that we can work together with the district to achieve the safer and more organized campus. I ask that you take into consideration our requests as a student body to make sure our campus is safe so that our education continues thriving. Thank you for your time. I am available to work on solutions to better campus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well said, and I will be on campus to talk with you and get your ideas. Thank you so much, Zoe. The board welcomes Lisa Martinelli.
Hi there. Let me turn on my camera. Just a moment. Well, my camera's not going to turn on, so. There it is. Okay, there. Thank you.
There you are.
All right, so.
Yes.
So my name is Lisa Martinelli, and good evening, board members and cabinet. You know, been in this district for a long time. And over the years, we've all talked about all the slights that the district has handed us. There's a lot. There's a lot of bad blended under the bridge. You know, I don't think it's worked. I don't think that maybe people feeling appreciated is a big issue here in this district. So I figure that I might begin by showing appreciation for people. And you know, I really appreciated the board members who listened to me speak last time. And I thank you for, you know, taking pause and and just, you know, allowing me to bring it to your attention. So I just wanted to say that. I also wanted to put out appreciation for my staff and all of the the teachers in our union who have shown appreciation for the work that the negotiations team has done and that the exec board of the union has done. So I just feel that this tone needs to be set. It needs to be set within me because if I change it within me, then it can be changed outwardly as well. So my inner world, I must envision what I would most like to see happen. And it has to be done with honesty. You know, we got together as a negotiations team and honestly thought, what could the district afford that would be fair? And it was a reasonable, a reasonable offer for four percent. We've had some presentations in the past about our budget, and there are always two things that come up, declining enrollment and deficit spending. I'd like to change the narrative on that because it's not deficit spending. It's deficit budgeting. Otherwise, for every year in the last ten years, except for one, we wouldn't have had an increase in our reserves. So, yes, we have staffing issues that need to be resolved, could have been resolved better. But the whole thing is, this is what I'd like to see. I'd like to see us honest with each other. I'd like to see us encourage each other to offer more than what we're doing to our students with a hundred twenty million dollar budget. We have the power and the ability to change the lives of at least ten thousand people. Wow.
I know. I know. It goes by so fast. Thank you, Ms. Martinelli.
And next, the board recognizes John Ramirez. John, if you can unmute yourselves, that'd be great. Another one of our students. John, are you on?
Dr. Mitchell, I don't see John Ramirez in the participants list.
He was here earlier at the start.
Okay, hopefully we can get him back on. The board welcomes Khalil Weatherspoon.
Dr. Mitchell, I also don't see Khalil Weatherspoon in the chat here.
Okay, thank you. The board recognizes Marla Bradfield. Ms. Bradfield, you see her? You see her, Mike?
I've unmuted and I've started. Can you see me?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Well, we did, but here. Here you are.
I'm going to start my video.
You're good.
Am I on? Okay.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
All right, when we started out, you were giving some recognition and that was really special because recognition is so important, but we couldn't participate because you've silenced us and you've also taken us off your video. So I just want to say congratulations to all the people that only the board could recognize. But what I signed up for was to talk about something I had heard last week on that the teachers were sharing that they didn't feel safe on their campus at Mesa Linda, and that just broke my heart. What teacher, what student, what parent wants to have their child not feel safe on campus? We're not a poor district. Why are we not taking care of this problem? Please consider an immediate solution. No one wants to work in fear. No one wants to avoid going to the bathroom because they don't feel safe. I've already experienced the death of a child because I was unaware of solutions. Do not ignore the pleas for a safe environment or there will be blood on your hands that you will live with for the rest of your life. We are not a poor district. You have money to protect your children, and people are asking for your help. You all pretend to not know. What are you pretending not to know about this situation? Do something about it before we have a tragedy. And I want to say, after hearing all of this negotiation baloney, thirty-seven years in the teaching profession, it makes me disgusted what we're dealing with every year with Adelanto. Dr. Mitchell, are you six and a half percent lower than any other superintendent in our district? No. Any district office employee, six and a half percent lower than any district in the High Desert? Yeah. It's time you manned up and gave us what you're asking for, a minimum of four percent, which is still
Thank you, Mrs. Bradfield.
The board recognizes Jeanette McColl.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Good evening, board members, parents, fellow teachers, and fellow coworkers. Tonight, I speak as a concerned teacher of Mesa Linda Middle School because there has not been consistent administration at the school in the five years that I've been employed at the district. Since spring of two thousand and sixteen, we've seen three administration changes and are about to see another. Most students do not see the same principle for their entire middle school career. The majority of students, because of this, are unaware of who administration is, all of them by name, unless they are in trouble. According to David Franklin in an article published in The Principal's Desk, staffing consistency is vital for a school's success. Culture is king. Schools leap forward or jump back due to positive or negative culture. This year at Mesa Linda, we lost a great deal of quality teachers on the team because of that change. Those of us who have been able to hang in there are barely keeping that culture alive. Our principal resigned again this year, so we're up for a new principal next year. Staff morale is down due to layoffs, and we have to give up language in a contract that we fought hard to obtain just to try to get the same raise as Victor Elementary. Also, that time that we give up goes to a new administration with a new set of policies that may only stay for another year or two before they move on to other schools. Brockmire et al. states in a two thousand and three article that research indicates that principal tenure and principal stability has a positive relationship with student achievement. I would love to have my students have a consistent principal that stays on for a long time as I continue my career in our district. Okay, as the eighth-grade students and a parent have stated, and I have previously requested, we are in need of more administration, security, and support to assist with positive morale in events rather than having to cancel well-planned events due to understaffing. If you're asking teachers to give up collaboration for the four percent raise to follow particular policy, training hours, and procedures that come with new administration, please look for one who understands our students and parents' population and is willing to stay and work with our parents and teachers in a collaborative manner. Thank you for your time and understanding this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board recognizes Kristen Rodriguez. Yeah, we can see you. I can hear you.
Am I? Okay. Good evening. So, why are we still doing Zoom meetings? According to what Mitchell says at the beginning of every meeting, the continued flexibility to meet remotely is in a proclaimed state of emergency. The state of emergency has ended. Therefore, we should be back in the boardroom. So why aren't we? Every other district went back a long time ago. Every other district went back a long time ago. Are you guys scared to face us? Scared to lose the power, to mute us and turn us into nothing more than lit silent little black boxes um at the tou- touch of a button? Why? Because you know we deserve better? Parents that entrust you to make the best decisions for their children deserve to be seen. Teachers and staff deserve to see you face to face when they are literally explaining their worth to you. Oh, my thumbs over there. Oops, sorry. Okay, um. Not only are they worth four percent, but they are worth a few extra minutes of your time. And the public that elected you deserves to see you in person. Or perhaps it's simple laziness that keeps us here on Zoom. Everyone knows Zoom means you only have to be business from the waist up. Um, also, Mitchell, you never got back to me. Why has the TK slash Kinder Jungle Gym been closed since the second day of school at Victorian McGathen Elementary School? Um, according to Ed Source, the district received forty-seven million in COVID pay. According to you, however, we only received thirty-seven million and only eight million is left. Where exactly did that go? Not to my daughter's playground, which I believe falls under gym equipment and or school repairs. Also, aren't there supposed to be tricycles? Thank you for your time and um and good night. I look forward to your response to response Superintendent Mitchell. And I really hope to see you all in person at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Board recognizes Angelique Jolly. I'm sure they welcome. Do you see Ms. Jolly on, uh, Michael?
Okay, there it goes. Um hello, Cabinet Board members and fellow teachers and parents, students, thank you for our ASB president speaking out. I really do appreciate it since that I am a Mesa Linda teacher. I do agree with all of the things that my colleagues have said and the ASB president. Um, it is sad that I've been at Mesa Linda now for seven years and have gone through probably a principal a year. Um, the safety at our school, even with classroom management outside of the classroom, is a mess. Um. It is very sad to see the change in teachers who do not feel safe at our school. The younger teachers that are coming in with no support and our students just seem to run amok. Um. I think that Mesa Linda teachers should also be paid hazard pay because of some of the dangers that have been on campus, like the M eighty bomb that was went off in our bathroom. Um. My camera's still not there, sorry. Um. But with that said, I do believe that our entire district at least should get the four percent, if not more. It's, I've been in this district almost twenty-something years, and I feel like every time we go to negotiations, it is a fight. It is a fight to ask for pennies on the dollar, where you guys are making your buku bucks in the top. We're the ones running the campuses. We're the ones in the front end. We're the ones dealing with the parents. We're the ones that are putting up with the student behaviors and the disrespect um with no support from our administrations. So with that said, hopefully you can at least give us our four percent. We deserve it. We fight for it. We work hard and we are your frontline. Thank you.
And thank you.
And the board welcomes Makayla Alcala. Makayla, are you on? She was another student. You see her on, uh, mic?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, my name is Makayla Alcala, and I am part of the uh ASB as well, and I'm speaking for my fellow classmates and for my teachers as well because just what I agree with um what all the teacher has been saying because we go to school, my fellow students go to uh classmates go to sto- school because we want to get a better education. We're there to achieve something in life, to make ourselves something worth um proving to our parents. We we're there to show them that that um them going to work, we can also go to work as like them with a better paying job. Now, you guys, um, I understand you guys have a lot on your plate, and I understand that you guys have a lot of paperwork to do, but you guys also need to understand that we um as students need to be be uh need to have better classrooms because we are being put in with kids that are very disruptive, very loud, doesn't even let the teacher talk. Some even like um one of the administrators are saying that I know a teacher who got um pushed out the door, who has been trampled on, and that is another why another reason why we need to have better um security on here, not just for our student, for the students, but also for the teachers because many kids are not learning and then we are failing our quizzes, our state tests, and you guys are wondering why is everyone failing? Well, we should have better classrooms in order to to learn, to study more, to be more prepared because with those kids in our classroom, th- they are not allowing us to be um high achievers. And I'm not saying that those students are not be uh shouldn't be taking notice. No, they should. But they should be taught in a different classroom with somebody who has more tolerance to be um able to talk to them, to sit with them and teach them because I don't go to school just to be interrupted by and to be walked over by kids who don't even want to be there. I go to school to learn, to get an education, to be somebody who I can show my brothers that it's okay, it's good to be in class. It's good to pay attention because the way are my classrooms are going right now, I don't find it very educational. And I feel my teachers speak out. I speak for my student, for my students, sorry, for my classmates and for my teachers. This needs to change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Makayla, for your comments tonight. So I'm gonna swing back to Khalil Weatherspoon. You listen, I skipped. Jennifer Rader, I'm sorry, I skipped you earlier. Did you? Jennifer Rader? You see Mike?
Yes, I I was trying to unmute, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um. Good evening, trustees, cabinet, Dr. Mitchell. As a country, as a state, as a community, we are happy to be working and living and playing normally again. We are in classes without masks and without social distance. We have the good habits of hand washing and using sanitizer. We stay home when we're sick, which honestly we never used to do unless we were really, really, really sick. And we are careful to keep our germs to ourselves. Otherwise, regular life is coming back. Why then are you still sequestered away from your stakeholders? The public, the parents, the teachers deserve to have access in person to the board meetings. I will concede that Zoom meetings are good for people who can't get to the boardroom, but each one of you is living life normally. You shop, you dine out, you travel, you're planning some pretty fancy conferences for yourselves this year. Why then are you still not allowing the public in the boardroom? We deserve to be seen and heard. We deserve to come and participate with our district's ruling body in person. It is shamefully hypocritical. I hope you can find it in yourselves to face your public once more. Give us a reason to trust and respect you. Now on to another issue. I have a grandson. Supposing I gave my daughter ten dollars for him, and she turned around and told him he had to justify and explain why she should give him three dollars of that money, keeping the rest for herself, and at the same time adding in extra requirements and restrictions. Obviously, that's a wrong, that's wrong, and ours is something like the same scenario. You can't give us a state ordered cost of living at a time when we are under backbreaking inflation while our reserves have more than thirty million dollars and you plan yourself extravagant trips. They've said that the current inflation will require the average family to add three to four hundred dollars to their budgets monthly. With the kind of reserve money we enjoy, it's shameful that we promote kids from grade to grade to grade with substandard reading skills. We need help in our classes, not another course, not a PD day, not an app. We need people. We need smaller class sizes. We need proctors and aides in the classroom, and your bo- board policies are pushing certified and classified alike away from our districts. As Marie Antoinette said in an example of complete disdain for her people, let them eat cake. That's about the sum of what you think of us. I have nothing more to say.
Thank you.
Madam President, we can close our comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let let's go on to ten gov- gov- governing board mem- members re- reports and announce announcements. Um. Do I have any vol- volunteers to go? Go first.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Okay, just real quickly, because I know we've got a packed agenda. Um, just thank you all for calling in again and expressing your concerns. Um, I hear you loud and clear, and I can relate to some of you. Um, that's why I got on the board to begin with. Um, and I think many of you know me and know that my children went to this district and you know, in quite fairness and honesty, my oldest son, I removed him from this district when he went into junior high because of the problems we had even back then. So um I hear you. He had a hard time learning when he was constantly being disrupted by other children. Uh, kids going in the room and hurting him while he's in there trying to get an education. Um, I understand the teachers only have so much control and you know, it's just i- it it gets out of, it gets out of control. Um, it is our job and our responsibility to give these kids, your children, our children, a safe environment to learn. That is our job. That is our responsibility, and I do believe this board has heard you all loud and clear, and I do believe we are going to make more attempts to try to make this the best district ever. That's always our focus. Um, so thank you for calling in. Thank you for all the teachers that called in, all the parents, and especially the students. I enjoy hearing from them. They do have concerns. They have freedom of speech. And I'm so glad they chose to call in and let us know what's going on in their schools, and I hope they continue to do that. And I do agree with everybody. I would like to be back in open session, to be able to see people, greet people, and most of all hug each other again. I really, really miss that. And you're all so appreciated. Please know that. At least I appreciate you so much and respect you. So again, I can't wait till we're all back in person again to see each other. Um, I'll just leave it at that and just thank, thank you again for calling in tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Which trustee would like, like to go, go first? Next.
I can go.
All right, thank, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, first of all, I just wanted to give a heartfelt um thank you to the students that represented Mesa Linda. I am so proud of you coming out and speaking on the behalf of your school and your teachers and yourselves. I am so proud of you. We do hear you. We are moving forward. We are doing um all sorts of things that Dr. Mitchell has in place. Um, we have put um extra security at Mesa Linda since the beginning of school. Mesa Linda has been um a challenge. Uh, we do hear you. We appreciate you, and I certainly thank you guys for coming out, speaking up. Another thing I wanted to say is that um on um I have the opportunity this weekend to go and spend um some time with um Ms. Martin and George and her drama uh class. It was such, it was so wonderful to um see the students um practicing for their um the greatest um showman, to see the children laughing and smiling and singing. She does such wonderful work with them. They were taking pictures. They were just, um, you had children doing lighting. You had children that made costumes. You saw how they were sewing things. It was such a pleasure to spend um the day with her on Saturday and her students. It's wonderful. Please make sure that you guys look out for um their um video that they're going to make. It was wonderful. And George, um, I mean, Ms. Martin herself, she puts her heart and soul into that, and it was so nice to see the laughter and the children playing and um it was wonderful. The dance moves that they had. You know, I tried to implement a few of them, and they were laughing, but I was like, I have dance moves too. I wanted to say also, also for the um uh congratulations to our children that won in Mesa Linda. If you need, you know, a volunteer for your basketball team, I'm here.
All right, thank, thank, thank.
Thank you, Mesa Linda, and for your dance. I'm here too. I would love to participate.
Yeah. Okay, who would like, like to go, go next?
I'll go next.
Okay.
I would like to thank um everyone that came out and shared their concerns with the board. Your voice is strong and and you're you are heard. We hear, we hear you. I especially would like to thank the students. This is the first time that we've heard from the stu- so many students at one time. Um, I'm ha- I'm happy to hear your thoughts, your concern, and your voice is powerful and well heard. Um, please, please, please come out again. Um, because it's always a pleasure to hear from you because you're on the front line along with your teachers. And um if it weren't for you, it wouldn't be no us. So thank you again. I would also like to congratulate uh Mason Linda and Melva Davis on the girls' basketball and the boys' basketball team. And also uh the history winners, the on your way to Sacramento to represent. That is awesome. And I can't be more proud of you. So keep up the good work, and I'll keep it short because we have a a long agenda. So again, um, we're in this together and and we will get better. That is for sure, and thank you again.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you. Trusty Web- Webster.
Hi, good evening. I want to start by our positives. I want to say thank you um to our students from Mesa Linda for coming out, commenting. Um, your opinions matter. That's your school. That's, you know, where your education sets. So it's so important that you're speaking out. I'm so proud and astonished, you know, I'm, I am really, like, I don't know how to explain it. Um, just, just really happy that you're here tonight, that you took your time out to come speak to us. Um, with that being said, I want to say congratulations to the Mesa Linda um girls' basketball team. The dedication and the hard work is mind-boggling, and I'm just so proud of you guys that that school has some greatness coming out tonight. Um, same goes for Melva Davis. I I'm, you know, just astonished the hard work, the dedication from our students that win. Um, I'm, I'm just so proud of you guys as well. Um, the history makers of our Victorian McGathen, Mr. Verduisco, once again, great job. You're doing phenomenal along with all of our students. And you know, we are, we are here for you. And I do appreciate everybody who has spoken, staff, students, um, parents, everybody, and I I want to encourage you to continue to come to us, continue to talk with us, continue to bring our concerns. And so I will leave it there tonight. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And it's my turn. Okay, I will, will admit, when I was in mid- middle, middle school, I didn't even know what what a school, school board was. Let, let alone that I could talk to them. So the fact that we, we have stu- students here that are are speak- speaking their mind and sha- sharing their, their concerns just show, show you how much more a- advanced they they are. You know, I, I was, back then, I was pouring, pouring glue on my palm and peeling it like skin. So I will admit, um, you know, I know Ma- Mesa Lind- Linda is have, having i- issues, and we're not just saying, oh, well, no, you know, it's, it's a folk, focus. Trustee Turn- Turner is con- constantly ques- questioning, you know, we all are quite questioning what's gonna hap- happen, you know? I know, know it's hard when they um, when the prin- principles change. But I, I, you know, it wasn't, I feel. I feel that good- good things are gonna come, because we- there- there's a push. There is a push, and it isn't ju- just from us. It's from the kids too. Okay? What the ki- kids want, kids are gonna get. So, you know, because again, it's all about the kids. And if we have kids who want- want- want to learn, we have to make- make sure that they in- they are in an envi- environment that they can learn. So, and one- one more thing to today was day- day two, that I had no- no ma- mask on. I'm so glad. But I will- will say that all of my scholars- scholars kept their ma- mask on, and I respect- spec- expected it. I had one come with- with no- no mask. Nobody said work. So, it's all about re- respect. So, all right, so let- let's go on, because we have a packed agenda. Okay, so let- let's go on to eleven- eleven A, because we have to do eleven- eleven A, which is, let me get my call out. Ms. Leve.
Yes, something to your student discipline and expulsion.
Yes. So, yes, so that is the student dis- du- discipline and expulsion expulsion for case num- number twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two dash sixteen. So, I need a mo- motion from a- from a mem- member?
Trusty Turner, a motion. I'm sorry.
I was gonna do it. You can do it. I- you can do it. It's okay.
Okay. Trusty Turner, I would like to motion to accept the administrative hearing, panel recommendation, and also the additional recommendations for the student on this expulsion.
Okay, can- can I get a second? Okay, we have a sec- second from Ekkus.
No, that was La French, but I would have.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Love. La French, my- my bad.
I thirded.
All right. Okay, and are we o- open for discuss- discussion? No. Okay, can- can- can I have- have a vote, please?
Yes, Trusty Ekkus.
I.
Tracy La French.
La French, I.
Trusty Turner.
Trusty Turner, I.
Trusty Webster.
Trusty Webster, nay.
Tracy Benz.
Benz, I. Mo- mo- motion pass- passes four-one. Okay. So, now we go on to eleven- eleven point zero- zero-one. Board- Boardman Minutes approve as writ- written and ord- order failed reg- regular Board Me Meeting of February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, and spe- special Board Me Meeting of March first, twenty-twenty-two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I motion.
Okay, I have a mo- motion by Web- Webster, and I need a sec- sec- second.
Ekkus, I'll second.
Okay, thank you. And I need a vote.
Tracy Ekkus.
I.
Tracy La French.
La French, I.
Trusty Turner.
Trusty Turner, I.
Trusty Webster.
Trusty Webster, I.
Trusty Benz.
And Benz, I. Mo- motion pass- passes five-zero- zero. Now, we- we- we are on to twelve, the con- consent agenda. We are take- taking i- items, twelve point zero-two through twelve point two-five. Does an- any trustee want to pull an item?
Yes, I want to pull three, twelve point oh-seven, twelve point oh-nine, twelve point sixteen.
Okay, so you want to pull the speech, the- the academic ser- services, the- the addendum for speech lang- language ser- services, a- a gre- agreement?
Yes.
Okay, and then you also wa- want to pu- uh, pull a- a pr- approval of the a- a green agreement with text strata- strata for e- email ser- service support?
Yes.
And you also wa- want to pull the- the rat- ratification, uh, uh, approve the- the addition of George Air- Air Four Forward Force Base Boeing test flight operations, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just making sure, because there's times, things have been moved, and it's like, yes, I'm just checking. Okay, are there an- any o- other tru- trustees who wa- want to pull i- items? Okay, so, hearing none. Uh, I need a motion to approve the re- remain me- meaning con- con- consent gen- gender i- items, mine minus twelve point zero- zero seven, seven, twelve point zero-nine, and twelve point sixteen.
I motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda minus those three.
Okay, and I need a second by Ekkus, right? Or was that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and I nee- need a vote?
Trusty Ekkus.
I.
Trusty La French.
La French, I.
Trusty Turner.
Trusty Turner, I.
Tracy Webster.
Trusty Webster, I.
Trusty Benz.
Benz, I. Mo- motion pass- passes five-zero- zero. Okay, so on to thirteen- thirteen i- items re- removed from the con- consent agen- agenda. Let- let's start with twelve point zero-seven. Seven, I need a motion to some- something to start this discussion- discussion. To approve.
I motion.
Okay, I got a mo- motion from La- La French.
Second from Webster.
Sec- second from Web- Webster. Okay, now we're o- open for this discussion.
Okay, real quickly, the reason why I pulled this one is because when I was going over the paperwork, I noticed that the superintendent signed the contract or the agreement with this program on seven-five-twenty-one. And I was wondering, was that an oversight? What- what- what happened there? Why is it not like twenty-two or present day?
That's because this is an endo, so we already have an existing contract. So, all we're doing is increasing an existing contract that we previously approved, and so you'll see my signature on there. This is because our district does not employ speech and language pathologists. And so, we use, uh, folk care. We actually, we just basically contract with pro care who provides our speech and language pathologists. As you- as I've suggested to the board, that this spring, we will begin to start flying positions and creating the position in our district. For space, the pathologists, we think that SOP in our own district will provide better service than consulted. And of course, as we grow, SMPs will reduce this contract.
Okay, and so this is an existing contract with the company we already use. Am I correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what I was concerned about, because like I said in the paperwork, it kept saying twenty-one-twenty-one, and I thought I- I was confused over that one. Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know on that.
Okay, so let- let's go- go ahead. Oh, and any other question- question- questions to trustees? Okay, so then let- let's take the vote.
Trusty Ekkus.
I.
Tracy La French.
La French, I.
Trusty Turner.
Trusty Turner, I.
Trusty Webster.
Trusty Webster, I.
Trusty Benz.
And Benz, I. Mo- motion pass- passes five-zero- zero-zero. Okay, let- let's move- move on to twelve point zero-zero-nine, biz- business ser- surfaces. Approval of the a- a green agreement with text strata- strata for e- email server support. Can I get a mo- motion?
Ekkus, I motion. I'll second.
Okay, so I'll give the mo- motion to La French, the second to Ekkus, and we are o- open for discussion.
Okay, the reason why I pulled this is because I wanted the public to know about this item in our consent agenda, because I thought it was pretty important. As a board member, I get lots of complaints about emails and our support system, internet, all that stuff. So, I just thought it might be a great idea to inform the public on this agenda item, so that they kind of know what's going on, and maybe they'll get a little relief when they find out what's- what this is about. Thank you.
Okay, trustees, and any other question- questions?
Can we add a little background context to this, having heard it?
I do not do that, please.
Okay.
So, board, this is a contract to support our start email service. They're going down at very opportune moments. We also are seeing a lot of spam and all kinds of malware programs. And so, we are hiring this company to, uh, beef up our security and create a little bit more, um, resiliency with our email service. So, this will hopefully prevent us from going down on our emails.
Okay. All right, so can- can I get a vote, please?
Trusty Ekkus.
I.
Trusty La French.
La French, I.
Trusty Turner.
Trusty Turner, I.
Trusty Webster.
Trusty Webster, I.
Trusty Benz.
Benz, I. Mo- mo- motion pass- passes five-zero- zero. And let's go on to twelve point one-six hu- human re- resource sources, uh, wrapped ratification, approve the addition of George Air Four Force Base Boeing Boeing Test Flight Operations sent- sent to the approved fee field trip list and approve the tend- tendence of the fee field trip. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I guess I motion.
Okay, I guess, motion by Ekkus, and I need a sec- second.
Webster, second.
Okay, and we're up for discussion.
Okay, the reason why I pulled this is because I wanted to remind the district, especially the teachers, that we do have, I believe, it's ten passenger vans that the board approved several years ago for the purpose of field trips and sports and after-school programs. The purpose that the board approved to buy these vehicles is because we knew busing was expensive. We knew that it's not always available. And we wanted our children to be able to experience more with field trips or sports after school. So, again, I want the public to understand, because I've heard lots of rumbles out there with people not knowing about it, or if our program even exists. So, just a brief history, we did approve these vans. The board did approve to buy them. They should be at the district parking lot and available for, you know, takeout, you know, following, you know, the board's or the district's paperwork and- and recommendations on how you do it. But I noticed they're gonna be going on this field trip, and it's gonna be two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for bus services paid out of their school funds. And again, you know, just please know, there are these vans available, to my knowledge. That's what they were bought for. I believe you contact the district office. I'm sure the superintendent or the CBO can help people with this. And it was a meant and approved for any type of field trips or after-school programs. So, I want you all to know about this. They should be available. That's what they were meant for. And if it could help any schools save their Title One money, or if they can't afford field trips, please know these, they are- they are ten or fifteen pounds. Again, I'm- I'm not sure if we're down to nine or if there's still ten. But again, they were bought for that reason, and I really hope that, you know, people will start utilizing them and use them for the kids to have those experiences. So, that's why I pulled this agenda item, is just to put that out there, and that's all I wanted to say. So, thank you.
Trustees? Okay, aren't- aren't those, like, ten pass- passenger vans, like, ten pass- passenger vans, or are they- do they hold more pa- passengers?
In passenger.
Ten?
Six, eight, six to ten.
Six to ten, okay.
This is for our whole class.
Yeah. Because, I mean, wouldn't- wouldn't it cost more to hire the drivers to drive more than one- one van than a bus?
Yes.
No, the parents or the teachers were- are supposed to be able to use them, to rent them, borrow them. They have to sign a release form with the district, just like when we do, when we check out a district vehicle. That's how it was supposed to go down. I don't know if it's changed, but that was the recommendation from the board, is that these would be available for either the teachers or volunteers, parents, staff. Anybody's supposed to be able to use these vans and drive them with, you know, a- after they sign the contract with the district, with liability, insurance, and driver's license. So, there was a procedure that went along with checking these vans out for that use.
Okay, I- I do have a question. I- I- I was on the board when we approved those vans. I think we need to really look into that. I didn't hear anything about any other employee, only the employees of the district were to use those vans. So, could you look into- could you look into that? Because I don't want a liability problem here, uh, using the vans. So, before we can make that statement, I would like you to look into that, because I don't remember that as one of the conditions for the vans.
Yeah, that's fine.
I- I- I will look into the process.
Okay, thank you.
On this particular, I, the- the class is too large to do one van. And so, this is really more accounting. You see a CSI, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We have to account for all the dollars, even though it's such a little amount, and so it's within our own accounts, and so. This is kind of under to the vans, but I do appreciate making that advertisement. I will clarify that policy.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so can- can I have- have a vote? Vote, please.
Trusty Ekkus.
I.
Trusty La French.
La French, I.
Trusty Turner.
Trusty Turner, I.
Trusty Webster.
Trusty Webster's, I.
Trusty Benz.
Benz, I. Mo- motion pass- passes five-zero- zero. And we are on to fourteen, staff re- reports and presentation. Patients.
Thank you, trust of bits versus the board room. We have another couple of schools here tonight to present their professional learning and collaboration plan. And so, with that, I'll turn over the slides. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Board President Benz, Board of Trustees, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet A S D, Staff, Students, and Community Members. Tonight, we are pleased to continue the site-based presentations of our professional learning and collaboration plans. And tonight, we have two schools that will be presenting their plans and sharing how they are innovatively and collaboratively building the skill and knowledge of their staff aligned to their PLCPs in this first year of implementation. First, we will hear from George Visual and Performing Arts and the principal, Saitaria Ridley. And second, we will hear from Eagle Ranch Elementary School and the principal, Bert Kristoff. We will pause in the event you have questions in between each presentation. So, at this time, it is my pleasure to introduce and welcome Saitaria Ridley, Principal of George Visual and Performing Arts.
There we go.
Mr. Sumit, Ms. Ridley will be sharing her own presentation. Mister Assuma, uh Ms. Ridley will be sharing her own presentation.
Thank you. Are you able to share at this moment?
You you should be um you try, it usually will kick kickoff. Are you able to share?
Okay, there we go. Thank you. Good evening, trustee, President Benz, trustee members, Dr. Mitchell, all of cabinet, my George staff, and all those present tonight. I am Saitaria Ridley, the principal at Georgia Visual and Performing Arts. And I'm excited to share the professional learning collaboration plan for our school with all of you tonight. Two years ago, through a series of conversations, collaborations, surveys, and data review, George had a few areas that staff wanted to focus on. Those areas were narrowed down to student engagement and parent engagement. As I took on my role as principal of George Visual and Performing Arts, we have continued with the student engagement and parent engagement focus. At George, student engagement refers to the degree of attention, curiosity, interest, optimism, and passion that students show when they are learning or being taught. When we talk about student engagement, we are really looking at three areas of engagement. We are looking at behavioral engagement, cognitive engagement, and emotional engagement. Behavioral engagement is when students actively participate in the learning process. Some examples of this could include students showing up on time to learn, students turning in all their homework and classwork, students bringing the materials that they need, and students being prepared to learn. The second area is cognitive engagement. This is when students try to learn as much as they can. Some examples of this may include students paying attention in class, students asking level questions, thought-provoking questions in class, students doing more than what was asked of them. The third type of student engagement is emotional engagement. This is when students have a positive outlook on their educational experience. An example of this would include students treating peers and staff with respect, students being optimistic about their work. Our second fogey is parent engagement. Parent engagement at George is parents and school staff working together to support and improve the learning, development, and health of our students. It is really about a partnership with our parents, and in many aspects, it goes hand-in-hand with our student engagement piece. Since starting at George in November, many teachers have shared that the student engagement piece is definitely needed. But at this moment, there is also a need for social, emotional learning, and this perhaps may even be a greater need. This share from staff prompted me to do a mid-year survey regarding our focus and current needs as a school. As you can see from the graph, seventy-seven point three percent of the staff have indicated a need for social, emotional learning. That's a little over three-fourth of the staff. What is great about focusing on student engagement is that it allows for us to focus not only on the behavioral and cognitive engagement parts, but also the emotional engagement piece. So you will see us starting to add some professional learning pieces that focus on the emotional engagement, the social, emotional learning aspect. With the mid-year survey that we did at George, we also asked teachers two questions around student engagement. What is your definition of student engagement? What do you think student engagement should look like in the classroom? These are some of the responses received from the teachers. Students participating in their own learning, students taking direct control of their own learning, teachers providing interesting work for students that make them want to engage more in their own learning, academic focus and behavior support, students are involved and excited about learning, students are receiving targeted instruction and will be able to apply the information in the future, students are ready and motivated to learn. When taking a look at success criteria for student engagement, these are the look fours. For students, we should see students asking questions and participating, students interacting with teachers and other students, student students putting forth effort, students relating to and making connections to what they are learning, students feeling safe in their learning environment, students connecting with teachers, and a rapport has been established, students being emotionally present. For teachers, we should see students providing opportunities for students to act, interact, teachers designing and adapting lessons for student success, teachers utilizing engaging teaching strategies, teachers providing lessons that are engaging and promote learning, teachers connecting with student students, and a rapport has been established. Teachers taking risks in learning and in their lesson design. This year, we are receiving professional learning from the Core and Company. The Core and Company is providing George staff with three staff professional learning trainings and two leadership team learning trainings. Our first professional learning was student engagement with the focus on teacher clarity. The second professional learning was student engagement with a focus on student levels of engagement. Our third professional learning will be student engagement with a continued focus on levels of engagement and social, emotional learning. We have also had one leadership professional learning training with the Core and Company. During this training, the leadership team was able to discuss and help guide the direction of our second professional learning training with the Core and Company, thus leading us to the professional learning on student engagement with a focus on student levels of engagement. Because our staff expressed a need for social, emotional learning, we will also begin professional learning in which we will start to look at the five social, emotional competencies. Those five areas include the following: self-awareness, which is understanding your emotions and thoughts and how they influence your behavior. Self-engagement, or sorry, self-management, which focuses on an individual's ability to regulate and control their emotions, thoughts, and behaviors. Social awareness, which is the ability to empathize, emphat- emphasize, sorry, empathize with others. It is the awareness of other diverse individuals and groups. And the ability to make sure we are treating others fairly. Relationship skills is the fourth competency, which is the ability to make positive connections with others. And the last competency is responsible decision-making, which provides skills to help students make positive and constructive choices based on individual and social factors like personal and academic. The instructional feedback is shared in various forms. Over the course of last year and the beginning of this school year, site administrators have gone through a series of professional learning with Dr. Robin Jackson. During the professional learning, we practice at getting better with instructional feedback practices through appreciative inquiries and through observations. Recently, site administrators joined me at George during one of our site leader meetings, and appreciative inquiries were done and the data was shared with staff. Formal observations are done, and then that information is shared within individual staff members to engage and reflect their practices. And formal walkthroughs are done, and best practices are shared weekly in our George Weekly Newsletter. Um that if you look on my slide, you will see um this is some, these are some of the practices I shared. Which is, uh I've noticed teacher modeling, student collaboration, mind breaks, model-guided independent instructions, direct instruction, student criterias are discussed for projects and activities, students genuinely making connections and collaborating, and objectives posted on the board. Our key performance indicators that will be used include interim assessment blocks for reading and math, star early literacy assessments, star math assessments, star reading assessments, and ESGI, which is educational software that guides instruction for kinders. We will also use observations. We will continue to use appreciative inquiries. Positive data will be collected with the intent to continue to look for those practices being used throughout our classrooms. We will also use surveys. Surveys will help data regarding our focus and if there's a need to revise. As previously shared, student engagement really focuses on three aspects: behavioral engagement, emotional engagement, and cognitive engagement. By continued support and professional learning with student engagement with an emphasis of social, emotional learning, we aim to see in our students develop leadership skills, improve social skills and life skills, higher grades and academics, increased confidence, student ownership. When they focus on parent engagement, our students' positive behavior will increase. We will have higher academic achievement. Students will have enhanced social skills. All of these things will assist with the continued building of this. Some areas of success for George Visual and Performing Arts include the staff responding with the concept of experts from within and volunteering to provide their peers with shared professional learning in the areas of math, autism, behavioral issues, and next month, the use of technology programs we currently use. All of these unpack student engagement. Another success have been has been with structured professional learning. And we have also had success with our leadership team meetings in which the team has served as the voice of grade levels and the grade level needs. And lastly, we have had success with evaluating our professional learning and revising and updating it to meet our current needs at George. At this time, I would like to say thank you to the board for your support of George Visual and Performing Arts and for and for supporting our school district. I'd like to thank Dr. Mitchell for your implementation of the professional learning collaboration plans. I would like to thank Dr. Dewizon for her continued support and guidance. And I also like to thank my assistant administrator, Mrs. Jenny Beck, who was always ready to take on more and do it well. And lastly, I'd like to say thank you to the certificated and classified staff at George for your hard work, your commitment to our students and families, for your passion, and for continuing this journey with me in my new leadership role. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Um board, do you do you have an any ques- questions?
I have no questions, Ms. Ridley. Thank you for your presentation. It was really, really nice. Thank you to hear about all the good things that's happening at George.
Okay, on on B B behalf, half of the board, I would like to thank, 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 thank you. I I know that S S E L is a big, big thing on on trust trustee Turner Turner's mind. You know, she she wor- worries about the kids so, so much. And to see that that that's where your schools folk folk focus at. I'm sure she she she's appreci- appreciative of that. And we we also, I I like the uh fo- focus of shared pro- profession professional learn, learning. We have te- teachers that have, you know, great experi- experience, great tips. And I went when I would sub- substitute to teach, I pick brains, any cha- chance I got, picked brains. So thank, thank you, you again.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ri- Ridley.
You so much. Thank you.
It is a little handed back to Dr. Dewizon, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ridley, to you and your team for your hard work and dedication to ensuring the success of your students. So we appreciate your presentation. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce the pre-principal of Eagle Ranch Elementary, uh Mr. Bert Kristoff. Mr. Kristoff?
Thank you, Dr. Dewizon. Good evening, Board President Benz, Board of Trustees, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet, Staff, and Community. My name is Bert Kristoff, and I'm the proud principal of Eagle Ranch Elementary. I'm here with my assistant administrator, Mr. Lotone, and my dedicated staff from Eagle Ranch. It's my honor to present our PLCP, Professional Learning and Collaboration Plan for the twenty two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. Our fir- first focus is reading literacy. In a staff survey, over ninety percent of our staff expressed concerns about our students at Eagle Ranch not being able to read. They noticed deficits in decoding, comprehension, fluency, and reading for enjoyment. The teachers in the primary grades wanted to focus on the core reading skills like decoding and fluency. The upper-grade teachers felt that that comprehension of complex text, both fiction and nonfiction, was one of the biggest issues. All teachers felt that the teaching of writing and grammar grammar uses should be a part of the process as well. What does reading literacy look like in the classroom? For a teacher, we want them to be involved in phonics and word recognition, vocabulary, teaching fluency, comprehension, text features, structures to support comprehension, increased focus on using Lexia and Accelerated Reader strategically, reading comprehen- uh competitions within each grade level. What does this look like for our students? They should be engaged in letter names, sounds, phonemes, working in small groups with peers, reading and comprehending complex text, responding to text in writing, and the increased use of Lexia and AR platforms in a strategic way. To help ratify the problem, the Eagle Ranch staff had professionally learning through San Bernardino County Superintendent's Schools. This entailed six sessions of two hours each, pres- presenting staff with different techniques to increase reading proficiency. Certificated staff is working on providing quality tutoring and effective small group instruction on a weekly basis. The staff also has had training from peers on AR and Lexio platforms. The second focus for our students is social, emotional learning. The staff felt that with the pandemic and the increasing trauma in society, teaching these uh resiliency skills would help prepare our students, parents, teachers, and the rest of the staff how to cope with the ongoing crisis within our community. Teachers realized there was a real need to not only support the students and parents, but also each other. So when we talk about SEL as a staff, we really wanted to dig deep into trauma-informed practices. What does that entail? What does that look like? The importance of building relationships with our students in a more deeper, meaningful way, mindfulness strategies, the staff being the example for our students, knowing how to control our emotions and regulate our emotions on a daily basis. So our students can see that we're leading the way. Teachers implementing SEL mini lessons consistently, daily, weekly. What does an SEL-supported classroom look like? Well, for teachers, making sure we're we're setting clear expectations and guidelines, being flexible for student success in our approach, asking students questions, working through problems, understanding that the problem may not go away in one day. It may take a couple days. It may take a week. Having different options for students. Maybe they need a different location. Maybe they need a different voice from someone from the staff. The ability to refer for professional help on our campus. What does it look like for our students? Making sure that they gain that confidence that they need to succeed. Setting individual and class goals, making better decisions, not only for themselves, but for their peers, collaborating with each other while they work and while they interact on the Collaborating with each other while they work and while they interact on the playground. Sharing openly to a few staff members that they trust. Able to talk and share with professional counselors. The staff had the unique opportunity to learn from Dr. Joelle Hood. She is one of the co-founders of Thriving University. Through these three two-hour sessions, the staff learned how to best support our students during these trying times. They were taught to use specific strategies. They were taught to use specific strategies and techniques in their classroom routine. Part of those strategies is continuing to build on the home-school connection. I would like to thank the board for approving the contract for Thriving University. Without your support, this would not be possible. One of the things we strive to do at Eagle Ranch through these folk I is to become a powerful and positive force for our students. It is very important that our lines of communication stay consistent and on point with all of our stakeholders. This way, we can redefine our approach to education if needed for the improvement of our Eagle Ranch scholars so that they have every available opportunity to succeed. It's through appreciative inquiry walkthroughs that we can do this most valuable work. In closing, I would like to thank all of my dedicated staff at Eagle Ranch, my assistant administrator, Mr. Latone, Board President Benz, Board of Trustees, Dr. Mitchell, and Cabinet, and especially the Eagle Ranch community for their continued support during my tenure as president. Thank you for this opportunity for allowing me to present Eagle Ranch PLCP. My staff and I look forward to seeing the continued improvement of our students as we continue our professional growth with a sense of purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Trustees, do you have questions?
I would just like to say, thank you, Mr. Kristoff, for your presentation. It was great hearing all the great things happening at Eagle Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to thank you for focusing on read, reading skills. I like the read, reading competition. You know, the kids, they always like to win no matter what, right? They'll run, run over you. And I also appreciate the SEL because, yeah, the kids really, really need some extra, you know, soul attention. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for listening and giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For your time.
The board concludes our presentations on professional learning collaboration plans, and so turn it back on to you, trustee Ben.
Okay, so let's go on to, no, now we've got to do fourteen point zero zero two business services presentation of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two second interim report.
Thank you, trustee Benson. So I'd like to welcome Michael Kraus, Assistant Business Services, to present the second interim report, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you. Good evening. We just had a mute issue there, but got unmuted, so I appreciate that. Good evening, members of the board and cabinet, members of the community that are with us this evening. While Mr. Suma pulls up that presentation for us, the second interim presentation, I just wanted to say how excited I am to be able to present another fiscal budget to the board and to the community this evening. And so what we have before us is the second interim, which is always presented every March to the board and the community. And it captures the dates from July 1st of last year until January 31st of this year. And it's a snapshot in time that tells us how are we doing on our revenues and how are we doing on our expenditures? And what does our ending fund balance look like? And so the slide deck this evening will hopefully demonstrate where we are in that point in time. And with that, Mike, if you'll turn to the next slide. So the discussion topics this evening for us are some highlights of the second interim, some current budget assumptions, unrestricted summary. We have what we call a multi-year projection, which we do a three-year summary, the current year and two out years. And then we look at next steps. And so as we go forward in these slides, I'll be reviewing each one of those topics as we move forward. All right, so looking at some highlights of the second interim. So there are three types of certifications, and again, we are proud to say that we are certifying positive, which means that the district can meet its obligations for the current year and the two out years. So when we talk about a multi-year projection, we want to be able to afford what we're doing currently. And then in the two out years, the other certifications are qualified, which means you can meet your budget for two years, and then negative, which means you can't meet your budget for any of the three years, the current year, the two out years. So a positive certification is what we always strive to do, and so happy to report that we will be certifying positive this evening. And then our LCFF revenues, we are down due to our ADA. We'll see that in a minute at eighty-six point nine percent. Our federal revenues are around forty-four million. As you might recall, we received a tremendous amount of ESER funds. But we also receive other federal revenues, special educations in there, Title I, II categorical funding, other restricted grants. And so that's where the bulk of the money is also coming from besides the ESER funds. And then we'll see in a minute, our ending fund balance goes from twenty-two point nine million down to sixteen point two million. And I'll break that down for you, what that is and what that means when we talk about that. But it's mainly due, again, what we'll see in a minute, is our ADA, which is how we're funded, and then some deficit spending. And then on the last point, all planning factors presented in the January state budget proposal that Governor Newsom came out with in his January proposal for the next year have been incorporated into the budget and multi-year projections. So where we get our information is from what the County of San Bernardino Superintendent Schools gives us. They give out what they call the common message, which gives us guidance on how to present the budget, what to put in there for second interim. And we also use something called the DART board from School Services of California. So we gather that information, we enter it into our calculator, the LCFF calculator, and we present this report to you. Mike, the next slide, please, sir. All right, so here's our current budget assumptions. And you can see there on the first line, you might recall the phrase cost of living adjustment. And so you might recall last year, there was no cost of living adjustment. So what the governor did for this current year, he said, well, we're going to give you what we probably should have gave you last year, and then a little bit for this year. So there you see the five point seven percent. Now, there is a lot of talk in the state that coal is going to be higher next year and the year after that. But until a actual budget is signed, we can't really go on any of those assumptions yet. So once that is in place, and hopefully by the adopted budget time, we'll be able to incorporate higher colas in the out years. But currently, this is where they sit. And then you see the next lines are contributions from a district standpoint to our STIRS, which is a certified employees management, certified staff is in there, anybody that's in the STIRS retirement system. We contribute those percentages. And we don't have extra money to do that. The governor says you have to put it in there. So we have to, when we allocate our budget, we have to account for that. The sixteen point nine percent goes to nineteen point ten percent in the out years. And the same thing with PERS. When you see that, that's for all of our classified members, including classified managements in there. And then you can see twenty-two point nine percent on the dollar to twenty-seven point one percent. So it's a huge increase as we move forward. But what that does is it funds the retirements for when employees retire. And so every school district has to put into that pot of money at the end of the day. And so that's where, when we talk about STIRS and PERS retirement systems, that's a contribution the district makes. Then you see the line of lottery. We always get asked the question, I buy lottery tickets, where does my money go? Or how does it affect schools? And so here you see for us as a district, per ADA, we receive two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And then our enrollment, I wanted to show you the difference in enrollment and ADA because there's been a lot of discussion about enrollment. How many people are on paper? And you can see there about seventy-seven, eighty-seven. But then, when we look at actual attendance on an average daily basis, and that is how our district, as well as every district in the state, is funded, we take a snapshot in time every, called P1. And at P1, this is what we report to the state of California. We were at eighty-six point nine percent. Where we should be is around ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five percent. So for every percentage that we're not at, say, ninety-five percent, it's about nine hundred thousand dollars decrease in revenue. And so in April, what they'll do is they'll report P2. And that's our official funding number to the state of California for next year and the year after that. And so currently, we have to use our P1 numbers in every report that we do at second interim. And you can see there the vast difference from our enrollment, what's on paper, to our average daily attendance. And so that does affect our revenues at this time. Now, there is proposals, again, at the legislator and at the governor's office to give some kind of leeway in the future related to ADA. But until we know what that is, we have to report where we currently sit. And then at the very last line, you can see there, since we did our third interim last May, we have been letting everyone know that in order to be balanced, or at least as close as we can to be fiscally healthier, we had to reduce. We told the county, we worked with the county and said we would be reducing some positions this current, next year coming up, and then the year after that. And so that's been in the budget since last May in every budget cycle that we presented to the board. And again, we wanted to have that in the second interim because the county is ultimately the one that reviews all of our budget assumptions. So after tonight, if the board approves the report, it goes to the county. They actually review it tooth and nail, and then they issue a letter to the Board of Trustees and to the District Superintendent and say, yes, we agree with the numbers presented in the second interim, or no, we don't, and here's why. And so that's always a good check and balance that we have from a district standpoint because they're able to give eyes to it as well and let us know if there's anything that they like us to change. And so as we move forward, that's always been the process and will continue to be the process. All right, Mike, next slide, if you will. So here we have our unrestricted any fund balance. This is just a summary of what we're looking at currently. And again, because of our ADA, we have to predict our revenues being down and being funded at that eighty-six point nine percent, unless something changes in the future, which it very well could. The governor could come out in May and say something different and perhaps give some relief on that. But we see our total revenues and our expenditures. And then the third line talks about the difference between our expenditures and revenues. And then what you have is what we call our beginning fund balance. So we started the year off with eighteen million. And then our ending fund balance this year is projected, again, this could change, at twenty-two point nine million. That then carries over to the next year. We look at how our revenues and expenditures are, and we have to subtract if we're spending more than we're taking in perhaps. So you can see there, it does go down. And then again, the third year out, we also see that because of our revenues and our expenditures, that our beginning fund balance does go down and then our ending fund balance. Now, with that ending fund balance, it's made up of various things. And so, Mike, if you can go to the next slide, here we have the breakdown of the twenty-two million this year, eighteen million next year, and sixteen million after that. You may have heard and you'll see this evening at a future agenda item, the purchase of textbooks. So the other assignment line there, out of that ending fund balance or our savings account, so to speak, we have put away money for textbook adoption. And so we have that in there to be able to purchase textbooks. And then you can see the reserve for economic uncertainties currently sits at three percent. So we have to, by state mandated law, we have to have three percent minimum in our reserve for economic uncertainties. So out of each of those projected ending fund balances, you can see what it's made up of. And then our unassigned is the last line that you see there. So on the third year out, projected again, right now, that could change depending on many factors. It's currently sitting at nine point six million. And so as we move forward, we'll keep adjusting this. The May revise will come out soon in May. And for adopted budget, these numbers again will change. Mike, the next slide, if you will. So then what we do is we also have a lot of restricted money, which is mainly federal money. And so we have to account for that. So here we have combined the restricted monies with the unrestricted to show you our revenues and our expenditures, our beginning fund balance, which is now combined. So we took our unrestricted any fund balance, which is basically unrestricted, right? And we combined it with the restricted monies, which we use for specific purposes. There's a lot of grant money in there. There's a lot of categorical funding in there. There's the ESER funding. So it's all lumped together for a multi-year projection. So when we see that and we put it in there, our ending fund balance, as you can see there, is fifty-four million, then forty-two, then thirty-six. But again, the main slide to take note of is the prior slide where we showed you our unrestricted fund balance because that is truly our unrestricted dollars, the way we use them. Here, you're just seeing the combined, which every district presents like this because they have to show the county what is their combined restricted and unrestricted. And that's what we have here is the combined. And so as we look to the future, we hopefully, these numbers will change that adopted budget. And we're excited to see what the governor comes out with. With that, Mike, if you have to go to the next slide. So again, the next steps that we will see, the next time we'll hear an update from the state will be in May and hopefully get some more concrete ideas of what to put in the adopted budget for our district and every district in the state coming from the governor's office. June, the dot the budget and L cap, that'll come before the board. And then in July, if we do a forty-five budget revise, for whatever reason, if needed, we would do it in July. And then September, the unaudited actuels. And what this is, is the how we ended this current fiscal year, how we said we were going to end and how we actually ended. And so that's where the unaudited actuels come from. And they're unaudited because the auditors don't audit them until November, December. And they put it to the board usually in January or February. And so then again, the same cycle continues with our first interim report for next year. That'll come to the board in December, and then the cycle just continues. And so we're excited again to be able to present this report, the second interim report to the board this evening. And Mike, I believe that's it. Next slide. With that, I'll be more than happy to take any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Board?
I have no questions. Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, I don't have any either, but that was really good. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Kraus, for your presentation.
Trustee Turner, you're on mute.
Thank you for your presentation. You did answer the questions on page two of the actual second interim, the not the Mets and the not Mets and the yeses and the no's. So thank you so much.
Yes, and I was saying that too. So thank you so, so much. Of course, your presentations make it clear, you know, though it's still like, wow, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board. I want to thank my team that helped create this, Mr. Zach Klemish and the Fiscal Services team that also were instrumental in helping create these budget reports at every, every turn of the way. And so I would be remiss if I did not thank them as well. And so just appreciate all the comments this evening. Thank you.
Okay, all right, let's go on to fourteen point zero zero three, Academic Services Presentation of Science Adoption.
Thank you, trustee Benson, the board. We have Dr. DeWaison going to talk a little bit about the status of our curriculum materials for our kids. They're really, really old. And so we've got a process for the next ten years or so to revamp all of our curriculum materials. So teachers have the best and newest and most up-to-date materials from state as well as having access to it for our kids. And so Dr. DeWaison, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. I'm going to share my screen. So good evening, Board President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet, and AESD staff and community. Tonight, I would like to give you background information on the item that you will be voting on later this evening to adopt science materials for our TK eight classes. I would like to thank my academic services team in advance for their work. Director Carol Coburn, our coordinators Rebecca Bunch and Lori Latimer. They were instrumental in helping us to get to this place, to bring this very important item in front of you. Having done several adoptions in the past, I know the workload in that. So I wanted to thank them ahead of time. So thank you so much. So our objectives this evening are to give you the current state of our textbooks and upcoming cycles of adoption to give you an overview of the next generation science standard. upcoming cycles of adoption, to give you an overview of the next generation science standards, to speak to you about our science adoption process and provide the rationale and recommendation of purchase of materials. And finally, I wanted you, we wanted you to be able to hear from one of our teachers who have been a part of this process as well. This slide just gives us a general overview of our current materials that teachers are using to teach with daily. You will see that health, social studies, science, history, science, uh world language are seriously out of date. And out of, and typically you have an adoption cycle every seven to eight years. Um and usually that seventh year is when you're vetting new materials so that you can adopt it by the end of that eight-year cycle for, for adoptions. Um ELA and math are, are the most current um as those new frameworks are currently in revisement by the state. And new terms and guidelines have not been made to our publishers yet. So once uh the state adopts those frameworks, those go to the publishers and then the publishers create the proper materials based on the state uh frameworks. So because our math adoption was lapsing a few months ago, you approved the purchase of gap materials, which allows us to stay in compliance for a gap in time until new apparent materials are available and state-approved um and, and state board-approved. So you will also see the recommended upcoming adoption cycle for A E S D, which will allow us to make sure that we have current and compliant materials. It's important that all materials are current for a number of reasons. Um standards have changed significantly. Teachers need the most current and relevant information. They need tools and resources to support the differentiated needs of all student learners. And our students are tested using the current frameworks of which publishers use to create the materials, which is then approved by the state. Any textbooks we purchase must be state-adopted, which basically means that they meet the guidelines and the standards set forth by the state so that they're made available for purchase. So this slide gives us the current state of our science materials. So the last science purchase was in two thousand and seven, meaning that our current materials being used in the classroom are over fifteen years old. Additionally, when you adopt it, it's also you have to consider when that book was actually published, which is typically a year or two years even before that. Um typically, we adopt textbooks in a eight-year cycle, meaning we are well overdue for new materials. The current materials are not aligned to the next generation science standards, which were implemented in two thousand and eighteen with the new science framework. The current materials are not available in digital format, meaning students can access, they can't access the materials at home on their Chromebooks. The recommendation we bring in front of you this evening is C D E-approved, N G S S-aligned, and is available in digital and workbook format with replenishable science kits to allow for hands-on learning opportunities for our students. This slide talks, gives us just a general overview of those next generation science standards. So when current students graduate from high school, more jobs are going to require skills in science, technology, engineering and mathematics than in the past. These are your STEM type uh jobs. N G S S is a scientific and engineering, it's uh scientific and engineering practices. It involves cross-cutting concepts and core ideas in science that are K twelve and should master in prepar- preparation for success in college and career in twenty-first century skills. Additionally, your N G S S standards build one on top of each other. So it used to be like in the old ninety-seven standards that you can test kids and the, and prepare them for that fifth grade science test. That is no longer the case. So if we're not building it from T K K and above, when they test, they are not going to be prepared for that test of, for science in fifth grade if they've not had those site, those concepts and standards that build upon one another. So N G S S also provides a strong science education that equips students with the ability to think critically, analyze information and solve complex problems. And it also allows for the skills um to develop that are needed to pursue opportunities within and beyond those STEM fields. Their hands-on collaborative and integrated environment rooted in inquiry and discovery. They're more student-centered and learning that enables students to think on their own, problem-solve, communicate and collaborate in addition to learning those important scientific concepts. So some typical um concepts that you might have, you have like space, weather, climate, engineering, uh chemical reactions, property and matter. Those are some of the things that you're learning in N G S S. So N G S S training and professional learning opportunities actually began um in two thousand and seventeen and took on a few different forms under previous administrations. But I want to highlight the process and the focus of the last year to get to the point where we are in front of you today. So under the leadership of Dr. Mitchell, Academic Services reorganized the Science Adoption Team, which they called the S A T, and restarted the adoption process. So previously to that, there was some professional development given to teachers about the N G S S standards. Um but this new uh adoption process involved the stu- the science adoption team. It was a sign-up open to all teachers to be a part of the science adoption team. And additionally, a vote to narrow down to two programs that would be piloted in the district. Those two pilots were McGraw-Hill and Savis. So Savis is, is a newer, but it's, it's really an older publisher. It was Pearson at one time. So they're, they're both well-long uh publishers. Um the S A team and the student piloted Savis from August twenty-twenty-one to October twenty-twenty-one. And this S A T team were asked to answer questions about lessons, ease of views, overall ranking of the components. This was a very deep dive into the curriculum um that they took um as a team together. So their responses were then compiled together to create a stakeholder presentation in Jan- for January of uh twenty-twenty-two earlier this year. S A T members presented stakeholder presentation to their colleagues during staff meetings in early February. And then Academic Services hosted multiple stakeholder viewings for parents, staff um at the district boardroom, as well as had a mul- uh satellite uh setup at Melva Davis um school as well. So stakeholder presentation was additionally posted to the A E S D website for stakeholders to review in February. And then there was a Google survey um for staff and parents where they were asked to choose which of the two programs uh that they preferred. So Academic Services analyzed the data and the responses and the results uh were with Savis curriculum winning the majority um of the vote in February twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. Um it from the staff. So our recommendation tonight um is for the adoption and the purpose of Savis. Um this is an eight-year purchase. And so it includes that digital access. So students with their Chromebooks can actually get online. And if they went over chapter five of their science book, they can pull up chapter five at home at their fingertips. Um it also involves those consumable workbooks. So gone are the days of the typical textbook, science under N G S S is really meant to be hands-on. So you will see these kits that are um really um full of items to be able to do these hands-on projects and um you know, analyze and look at things. They'll have like microscopes and all these different materials. And what's really neat about it is that this adoption will also refill those kit every year. So teachers don't have to worry about, oh, I don't have this, or I need this, or I need that. These kits come refillable every single year. It also includes an integrated model for grade six through eight. So it used to be that there was life science, earth science, physical science and usually one was sixth grade, one was seventh grade, one was eighth grade. And so now um what they do is they teach science of those three disciplines in an integrated manner, which is really what we want kids to see, not see science in these topics of isolation, but really see them as an integration of one another and how they work with one another. The price also includes uh two-hour professional development for uh all teachers. And so I like to distinguish this professional development. So this professional development by publishers is really how to use the textbook and its component and all the resources that it has to offer. Additionally, on top of that, the Academic Services team would provide more in-depth professional development in the idea of N G S S. How do we teach it? How do we make sure that it's accessible to all of our students? And so um the price is there before you and that will come up to you later. But at this time, um it was also important that uh I shared with you a little bit of the feedback from our teachers and students. So teachers, um a few comments, I piloted Savis during distance learning and liked the ease and access and assigning activities to students. Also was an excellent library of digital resources and videos to accompany instruction. Parents were impressed with the depth of knowledge last year during virtual instruction, graphics and tests, um more user-friendly. We also asked the students, um which I think is really, really neat, um what they thought about it. Um the lessons were fun. They helped me a lot. They weren't that difficult, but they were very helpful. I like how we got to go through the process of learning about ourselves. Um the good is that the videos were fun to watch. I can't see the bottom below me, but I'm hoping you can see that. Um it blocks on my screen. Um it's also uh very important that we provided a voice from uh one of the teachers that um served on our uh science adoption team. Um Ms. Tamara Smith is from George Visual and Performing Arts and is an eighth-grade ELA and science teacher um who also served on our science adoption team. And so I want to thank her for being here this evening to share her experience in this adoption process. So Mrs. Smith, thank you for being here this evening.
Hello, uh, thank you. Thank you for having me. So what I wanted, the things that I really like about the program again is the digital delivery. And um I actually prefer its method of di- digital delivery to even our H R W because um I get to, you know, you get to select and aside decide what is assigned um from the text. The most important thing though is every single day, there is some science activity. There is something to do. Um there's small labs and the way it works out, it's really great because it's broken down into topics. And so the topics then are set up into lessons, some could be three to five. And as I said, like each day, there is an interactivity or a small lab. But the best thing is with each topic is a quest and those quests are real science and engineering. Like um this students love making their prosthetic arm. Um again, we um had a great time with our batteries, you know, making our levitation devices, you know, different things with it. So it's real science. I also love that the text is excellent for Cornell notes. I'm huge on Cornell notes. It chunks down, it breaks out really good. And so, you know, we do that together in class. I go through the text with them. We, we do everything in class. No. I might assign an interactivity for homework, but I know it, it's enjoyable, the students get into it. And I was thinking back when I was teaching elementary, this would have been like the happy hour of the, you know, happy highlighted hour of the day. You know, something the kids could look for because, you know, again, it's hands-on. And when you get them engaged with that, then you can get them into the more difficult text and, you know, with that. So I enjoyed the program. It saved me last year for definitely um again, but you know, the only way to really learn science is by doing science. So, so I, again, I enjoyed the program.
And, thank you.
Thank you.
That does. Thank you so much, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you. I'll turn it back on to trustee Vince. Thank you.
Okay, um, I guess, uh, board, do you have ques- questions?
Yes, I do. Um, you know, I, I talked with Dr. Mitchell briefly yesterday regarding the adoption. And as I explained to him yesterday, one of the most important uh duties of the school board member is adopt textbook and curriculum. And uh it's something that we really need to look at, the surveys through uh parent involvement, through student involvement, teachers' involvement, so forth and so on. Um in the past adoptions, uh since I've been on the board, the board was giving copies of books and but copies of the curriculum. You know, copies of feedback from our parents and if students were participated in the adoption. And um this is my first time really hearing about all the different uh activities that taken place. And here, I'm, tonight, I don't know what the textbooks look like. I don't have a copy of the surveys. I don't know what I will be approving within the next few minutes. So what I am requesting that the board do is table this until we could get copies of the material so we can intelligently make a decision and approve this adoption because it's very important. Um I, I didn't see it on our website. Um and, and it should be at our district office for our community to come in and take a look at it. Not only that, the board need to take a look at it. Um to be in alignment with a uh board policy sixty-one, sixty-one point one. And uh again, this is something that we really need to take serious because as you all know where we, where our academics stand and um so I'm not saying that we're not, I don't want to, I'm not saying I'm not approving it. I just need more information to approve it. Um and that's all I have.
Okay.
So, so presentation, Dr. Dwight's on. I know a lot of work was put into this. I see a lot of work was put into this, but the board was not made privy of any presentations throughout this period of time that you were in the pilot to e- explain to us and even talk to us about what was happening. And so to ask us to approve a three-million-dollar adoption without us even looking at a, a copy of the book is not a good thing for us, uh at least for me. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so when we come up. I'm sorry. I was gonna say when we come up to that, that uh agenda, agenda id- item, then we, we can may make a mo- motion to, to ta- table it.
Okay, thank you.
Right, okay. Uh let, let's go on to four fourteen point zero zero four at academic ser- services, presentation of pos- positive behavior in intervention, so supports.
I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to say anything.
Oh, well, I, I thought we, well, I, we're gonna have the discussion, right? I mean, when, when, when we get the mo- motion, then we have this discuss- discussion. Right now, it's, it's just the uh the presentation. So can we just go through the presentation and then we'll get the dis- discuss, discussion when we mo- motion it?
Okay.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, four fourteen point zero, zero four.
Thank you, trustee Vince. Um this is a presentation that describes a contract that would be uh uh for the board's consideration in new business regarding establishing P B I S across all of our schools. You heard tonight from students in Mason Linda um that their desire to be in classrooms that are free from disruption, free from disruptive kids. Um we, there is a, there is a research-based methodology to get there and that's uh that's P V I S is what we're recommending. And so this is a presentation on the contract that will come before the board over the seven year county superintendent's schools office to, to reset our district and retrain our district in terms of our staff and students uh and get us on the right track to promoting P V I S consistently and with fidelity across the district. So I'll throw it over to Dr. Dwight's, I think.
All right. Good evening again, uh Board of Trustees, Dr. Mitchell Cabinet, A E S D Staff and Community. Um tonight, I'd like to give you some background information on another item that you'll be voting on this evening um to support our district-wide P B I S implementation um contract with California help. So I would like to again thank my academic services team for their work, our director Carol Coburn and our coordinator Rebecca Bunch for their work um in this area as we work to um make sure that P B I S is solid and visible at all of our schools. I would, I would like to start out with what is P B I S? Uh we, we shorten it to P B I S, but it's We shorten it to PBIS, but it's Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. PBIS is an evidence-based, three-tiered framework to improve and integrate all the data systems and practices affecting student outcomes every single day. So PBIS helps schools to create a school climate where all students are succeeding by being proactive and actively teaching ex, social expectations for behavior. While this is in place to some degree at our sites, we are launching a PBIS reset. And that's so that we can address the needs of all of our students from a proactive approach. There are three tiers involved in this implementation and you see that in front of you. So there's a tier one, which involves the practices and systems to establish a foundation of regular proactive support while preventing those unwanted behaviors. Schools provide these universal supports to all students school-wide. So from how you teach, how we, how we are in a cafeteria, how we are in the hallways. And it has three basic principles to PBIS, be safe, be respectful, be responsible. Just about every single thing you can think of on a school has to fall within one of those three areas. That's why they kind of simplified it for our students. Tier two are practices and systems that support students who are at risk for developing more serious problem behaviors before those behaviors even start. So those support helps students develop the skills they need so that they're successful. So the idea is that your tier one hits about eighty to eighty-five percent of your students. Tier two would be another ten to say fifteen. And then if you get to tier three, it's where students who need it receive more intensive individualized support to improve their behavioral and academic outcomes. That's your smallest group of students. If you implement PBIS right and you implement it well in the whole school, every teacher, every campus security, every single office person, every single person, when they have that all-school, all-in approach is a proactive means of moving forward so that your students are successful. So why PBIS? So we do this because it improves students' academic and behavior outcomes by ensuring that all students have access to the most effective and accurately implemented instructional and behavioral practices and interventions possible. It's a decision-making framework. It's research-based. It works. And that it guides the selection, integration, and implementation of the best evidence-based practices. So what are our goals? Our goals for PBIS coming from a district-wide perspective is to create a district-wide behavior prevention intervention system. So we had four schools recognized for their PBIS outcomes last year. We think we can get all fourteen. So that is our, our goal and that is what we're looking to do. So we want to develop the infrastructure for safe and welcoming schools. We want to increase proactive and preventative supports for student health, safety, and wellness. We want to improve overall school climate and we want to provide the supports. This is that professional development, the coaching, the collaboration for all school sites. So what's included in this contract that we have? Well, it includes district leadership, training, and meetings. It starts at the top. So our voice at the district office and what are our expectations? What are those non-negotiables for all of our schools to put PBIS in place? It involves site-based team training. The idea is to get started this year, just begin it so that we can start next year solid from day one, from the beginning. These are what our expectations are for all of our students in our schools. The training for one administrator and coach in the following areas. So it's a self-assessment survey, a tiered fidelity assessment. So again, looking at all these pieces to make sure that PBIS is solidly in place. But what's really neat about this contract is it also involves individualized site-based coaching. So those schools that are already getting awards, where are we now? How do we continue to strengthen what we already have in place? And so that individualized coaching will help and support with that. And so this concludes my presentation and overview of that PBIS contract that comes before you later this evening. So thank you.
Hey, Board, do you, do you have questions? Trustee Turner, I'm mute.
Okay, thank you. I'm really happy with our PBIS program. I know that a few of our schools, like we said, Westside Park, Mrs. Penn, I cannot, I always miss her last. Is an expert in PBIS. Are we, are we planning on using some of our current principals and staff to provide some of the training? Are we relying strictly on the county to provide that for us?
Yes, that absolutely, we are asking that. Additionally, we also have Ms. Pantoja onboard. Our new, yes, our new administrator, she is one of our onboarding principals as well.
Great. I love to hear that because she has a wealth of knowledge and we received gold and silver and all type of awards for our PBIS over the years. And I'm happy to see that all of our schools will be included in that. This is so important. Okay. Thank you for that.
Hey, trustees, any questions? Comments you would like to share? Okay, I'm, I want to thank, thank you for your presentation. Tation, Doc, Dr. DeWise, DeWise on, and you know, I look for, forward, forward to seeing the district as a whole kind of start to build, build up. So, okay, let's go on to new biz, business fif, fifteen point zero, zero one. Approved Board Res- Resolution twenty-one point twenty-two point twenty-three. Make, making findings as required by AB three six sixty-one to permit the Board of Trustees meet, meeting to continue to be conducted by teleconference while COVID nineteen emergency remains in place. Can I get a motion, please?
Webster motions.
Okay. Can I get a sec, second?
And so I second that we remain in place.
Okay, okay, we're up for this discussion, discussion.
You know, I, I'm looking forward to going back and, and our boardroom, our beautiful boardroom and forum and having our community back in the boardroom. I think because of the mask mandate was just lifted just this past Monday. I think I would like to just give it another month and we consider, just take it slow. I don't want us to immediately start zooming in together all of a sudden, because that's what happened before. So I would like to look at this again, go another thirty days and then see how things go. If we're still on the downward swing of COVID cases, then I'd be more than happy to vote that we return to open up our boardrooms again. So that's all I have on that.
Any other trustees?
I'm, I'm on the opposite and I would really like to see us go back in person. I think we've been out long enough and I feel like we're starting to lose touch with our public and our people. And they keep calling in and asking us to please go back into open session. So I have to agree with them. I think it's that time that, you know, that's my own personal opinion.
Okay, and any other trustees? Okay, let's take, take a vote. Christie Eckes?
Nay.
Trustee LaFrench?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Aye.
Christie Webster?
Nay.
Trustee Benz? Um, yeah, I didn't chime in. I should have. Um, I think if we have expectations in place and put, putting in, you know, so, social distancing still. I, I think it's time to get into. So it's gonna be, uh, name. The mo, mo, motion fail, fail, fails to three. Okay, let, let's go on to fif, fifteen point zero, zero two. Approve the rat, ratification pain, payment of two thousand, seven hundred dollars to C, C, CSBA, including travel expenses for ser, services rendered on March fifth, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a mo, motion to approve?
Trustee Turner, a motion that we approve the ratification to CSBA, including travel expenses.
All right, and can, can I get a sec, second?
Webster seconds.
All right, and we need a vote. Christie Eckes?
Uh, were we gonna have a discussion?
Oh, let, let's have a discussion. Sorry. I'm just like, let's go.
Okay, real quick, real quickly, again, I have a problem with ratifications. You know, I really appreciated her. I enjoyed her. But again, I do believe the board should have had this on an agenda item so that we would have known more about it and been able to discuss it and all that stuff. I mean, I could go on and on about it, but anyway, I just have a problem again with the ratification. And I really want that to stop in our district so we can do things more professionally and have a say-so on it, a vote on it, know what we're paying, know what we're doing, know who's coming out. I just, again, ratifications aren't, aren't good with me. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna look like a hypocrite after what happened at the last meeting with the last speaker and that ratification, if I go ahead and approve this one. So again, I loved her. I loved everything she did, but I have a problem with ratification. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Hey, Doc, Dr. Mitch, Mitch, can, can you kind of clar, clarify why this was a rat ratification and why it, it was not on the, uh, gen, gender pre, previously?
Uh, we had a difficult time first securing a speaker for CSBA. And we're, and my back was, our backs were against the wall of getting our retreat together. So literally, we were pulling this contract together the Friday that we left for the retreat. I knew how important the board, the board made it very clear that you want to have the board's attorney speak to you about board governance, but also CSBA. So I did not want to have our retreat without CSBA. And I thought the board would support this ratification, knowing how this has been stressed to me to provide CSBA training a long ways ago. And I get that, but we, we pulled the retreat together and then we just had a hard time securing CSBA. But I'm, but I am happy with who we were able to get. But Exenia was primarily reaching out for days and days at a time trying to get a speaker for us. And so we kind of got one and then there was negotiation back and forth with her. And we literally didn't get her contract until the, the week after we had the retreat. So, um, trustee, I can assure you that I will do my very best to make sure that we limit or eliminate as much as we can ratifications. There will have, trustee, like say, say a pipe goes out out of school and you know, water, where there's sometimes there's ratifications for that kind of stuff, but contracts and events that there shouldn't be. So I agree with you, trustee, because and you have my commitment to significantly reduce these or eliminate them all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, and any other trustee?
Yes, and I don't like ratifications either and my comment has always been to prepare. But I do know about this one and I do know that talking with Mrs. Larray, you know, I'd ask her, did we solidify CSBA? And she would always say, no, I'm still working on, I'm still working on it. And it was after the board meeting. So, and you know, the board had indicated that we wanted CSBA there. It was important that CSBA be there. So the, the ratification like this is something that, you know, we don't want to approve, but sometime we just have to. And I mentioned that it wasn't a matter of planning because I think that we didn't solidify the dates for our retreat until we didn't have this planned months in advance. So, you know, I have to say that because she was really good. And Dr. Mitchell did inform us that this would be a ratification. So I'm okay with that.
Okay, and, and any other trustee? Okay, let, let's go for a vote, please. Christie Eckes?
Nay.
Christie LaFrench?
Aye.
Christie LaFrench?
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that. I didn't.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Christie Webster?
Christie Webster, aye.
Christie Benz? Benz, aye. Mo, motion pass passes for one. Okay, now let's go on to fif, fif, fifteen point zero, zero three. Biz, business ser, services approval of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two second interim re, re, report. Can, can I get a mo, motion to approve?
Trustee Turner, a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two second interim report.
Okay, and can, can I get a sec, second?
I motion for a second.
All right, thank you. We're up for the discussion, discussion. Hearing that, let's call for the vote. Christie Eckes?
Aye.
Christie LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye.
Christie Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Christie Webster?
Christie Webster, aye.
Christie Benz? Benz, aye. Mo, motion pass passes five dash zero, zero. Okay, here we go. Fif, fifteen point zero, zero four. Biz, business ser, services approval of the agreement with KYA for third thirty-one shade structures on twelve school sites. Can I get a mo, motion to approve?
I'm motion to approve. It's hot out there.
It's hot out there. I second.
Quickly.
Okay, we got LaFrench and we have Turner. We're up for this discussion, discussion.
I would just like to say that it's a long time coming. It's hot outside and, you know, the shades for children is well needed. So thank you very much.
Yes. Yes. Okay, then let, let's go for a, a vote, please. Christie Eckes?
Aye.
Christie LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Christie Webster?
Christie Webster, happily, aye.
Christie Benz? Benz, aye. Mo, motion pass passes five zero, zero. All right, let, let's go on to fif, fifteen point zero, zero, zero five. Biz, business ser, services adopt and approve res, resolution num, number twenty, twenty-one point twenty-two point twenty-four. A res, resolution of the govern, governing board of the Ad, Adalanto Elementary School District approving the purchase of real prop, property located at one, seven, eight, four, five John, Jonathan Street, Ad, Ad, Adalanto, California, nine, two, three, zero, one. Can I get a mo, motion to approve?
Akas, I motion.
Okay, and can I get a sec- se- second?
Webster seconds.
Uh, Doc- Dr. Mitt Mitchell, for the sake of transparency, do you wa- want to gi- give a brief of, of what's hap- happening here?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll ask Mr. Kraus to give an overview. Thank you. Mr. Kraus?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, members of the board again. And so, uh, the opportunity arose to purchase this property, which is behind our maintenance and operations department. They have, uh, a yard that goes up to the edge of this property. And then it's really weird how this property is just was like a cutout, uh, right there on Jonathan Street. So when the opportunity came, the house caught fire, um, and the owner was ready to sell. And so when we looked at the map, it only made sense to, uh, reach out and attempt to purchase this property, which we've, uh, been success- successful and able to do. And this will give us the extension from our MNO yard all the way to Jonathan Street, uh, when you look on an aerial map where it really should be. And so we're excited to be able to move forward, uh, potentially on this property and then expand our footprint. Uh, the natural, what I would consider the natural footprint of the district office property there, right on the other side of Adalanto Elementary School and the driveway that comes in off of Jonathan to the, uh, district office. And so with that, uh, with the approval, potential approval this evening, we will, uh, move forward, uh, in negotiations, uh, through escrow to, uh, work on purchasing this property and the house that sits there. And then the goal is to fence it off once we obtain, um, uh, the property, uh, for di- for the district. Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about our preliminary plans and how to use that extra space? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. So one of the things we're looking to do, once we, uh, remove the, that, that abandoned boarded-up house that's there, that will give us a opportunity to create an avenue of entrance into the, uh, district office. And so, uh, one of the things that we're, one of the, uh, areas we're looking at is potentially, potentially putting a, additional steel building there for a warehouse, potentially is one of the ideas that we're looking at, as well as give us some access off of Jonathan, uh, to the district office backside of the property. We have a lot of traffic that comes in on the air expressway, but with the building of, uh, some buildings out at the airport, there's gonna be an increased traffic presence on our expressway. So this will give us an opportunity to also alleviate traffic congestion and they can come in through the, through that way as well. But, uh, we're excited to potentially expand our warehouse space. We are completely, um, we are completely stacked and packed in our current warehouse, including our CNS department who stores a lot of dry foods. And with the price of everything going up, the more space we have, the more opportunity we have to stock up on dry goods that we can store, uh, for extended periods of time and be able to service our, our students, uh, through meals as an example as well.
Okay, board quest- questions?
Yes, I do. Um, do you have an aerial of that, uh, area, um, uh, Mr. Kraus, so you can show the public what we're talking about? I know we have pictures of it. Or is it made available?
I believe, uh, um, Mr. Suma looks like he's pointing it up now on Google Maps, which would be if he enlarges that right off of Jonathan Street, I can demonstrate for you, uh, the property where it sits and, and the house that's currently there off of Jonathan Street.
There you go, perfect.
And we go. And so you can see there, the, the, the fence line with the trees, that's our MNO yard. And, uh, currently, the property that we're looking to acquire is this house in this concrete pad right here on your screen. And so it would be a continue, a continuous then property line made into a square or rectangle really at the end of the day, because we would take that fence down of trees, extend that yard all the way out to Jonathan Street and then give us a lot more space there, uh, for our district property. So it only makes sense to be able to purchase that property for the district, uh, since it is abandoned and that the use of the property as it currently is, is, is not fathomable for any, uh, particular use, not for housing, not for any kind of business. So, um, it does make sense for us to, uh, attempt to purchase it, in which we've been doing, and I appreciate the, all the support from, uh, Richard, our supervisor of MNO and his team, uh, working with us as well as far what the future plans would be for that area as well.
I see our white bands in the picture. In the maintenance yard. Those are our vans. Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Suma, for that, for, uh, the good map.
Yes. Okay, tre- trustees and any other que- questions?
I have one. Um, can you tell us what fund this will be coming out of?
Yes, that's a great question. I appreciate you asking that. So we have, we, the board recently approved the creation of Fund Forty, uh, which is a separate fund from Fund O One, our general fund. And Fund Forty is where we really should be putting our facilities money that the district has collected over the last many years, uh, but it's sat in the restricted accounts in Fund O One. So we talked to the county and we said, hey, we really should have a Fund Forty. How can we do this? And they worked with us and we brought it to board. We're going to be moving that money over into Fund Forty. It can only be used for facilities construction. For instance, it'll be paying for the shade structures, it'll be paying for the purchase of this property, but it can't be used for salary and benefits. It can only be used for facility projects. And so as we move forward on a long-range facility master plan, any monies in Fund Forty will continue to, um, be utilized and incorporated into our ten-year facility master plan as well.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, well, let's, um, any other ques- questions? Okay, let, let's have, have a vote, vote, please.
Christie Akas?
Aye.
Christie LaFrench?
LaFrench.
You cut out Christie LaFrench.
I think I'm having a bad connection. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Christie Turner?
Christie Turner? Aye.
Christie Webster?
Christie Webster, aye.
Christie Benz?
Benz, aye. Mo- mo- motion pass pass passes five zero, zero. Okay, on to fif- fifteen point zero zero six act, act academic ser- services approve the purch- purchase and adopt adoption of so- so- Savaz Cal- California L- Elevate Sci- Science Curriculum ma- ter- materials in the amount of three mil- million one hundred four forty-nine thou- thousand seven hundred eighty-one and ninety-one cents. Can I get a mo- motion?
Let me table this for the next board meeting and, and allow the board to receive copies of the material, the surveys, and so we can make a decision at the next board meeting.
I second that motion.
Okay, so we are vote, voting to ta- table this until we, we, so that would be a board can, can get cop- copies so that they, they can re-review the, uh, cur- curriculum. Am I cor- correct?
Yes.
Okay, I did, I do have a question. Um, in the past, I do believe that the board would have a, um, public hearing uh, for the public to speak on the adoption of our curriculum. When we would do that, I might be wrong, maybe Christine remembers, but I, I could have sworn. Yeah, so if we table that and we are supposed to adopt it at the next one, I would like a, a public hearing on that also, so we can go with our, our regular policy. And yes, I do want to see the material.
I agree.
I will check to see if it's required to have a public hearing. I don't think that it is, but I will look into it.
Okay.
Okay, so let's have a vote to ta- table this. Christie Akas? Wait, hold, wait, wait, wait. Love French, Tracy LaFrench, I'm sorry, you're down at the bottom. You, you had a thing to say. I'm sorry, sorry.
I did. I wanted to say to, um, Dr. Joyce on that, all of the time that it took in your surveys and getting the teachers and having your pilot, you did so much work on this that it was excellent. I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you have put in and your staff have put in getting all this information. Um, I do know that, um, when we're having parents inputs and things like that, or the board inputs, that's where, without any knowledge of me knowing anything about this, um, that's where, um, my concern is that, you know, that we didn't know. But all the steps that you took to get to where you are to bring us up to par, that, you know, um, the ending that, you know, I, I know that, you know, you'll get what you want. And, um, I just appreciate all the work that you did put in, especially because you said it started last year during the pandemic and the children using it and things of that nature. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you, Ben.
So I have you now on my screen part, so I can wa- wa- watch you, okay, love? Okay, so we need, need to now vote to ta- table, unless somebody has a que- question or something? Yes, Webster?
Yes, um, I have a couple questions. I'm sorry, I will try to make it quicker. Um, Dr. Dozy, and you did mention that the surveys had been completed by parents and students?
Parents have the opportunity to view publicly, so that was made available to them. Additionally, they, uh, get an opportunity to vote.
Yeah, so it was displayed at our district office. If I, if I remember correctly, when I was going through onboarding, it was displayed at the district office for everybody's review.
That is correct, at the district office. And additionally, we also had another set, um, at Melva Davis of both adoptions as well.
Okay, so, so all of the materials were reviewable, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. And then, as you said, can you give me an estimate about how many teachers were teaching this last year before bringing it to the board?
Um, all teachers piloted the program, they had access to, but, uh, a deep dive where you gathered their feedback, that was the, the science adoption team um, that had a deep dive. And that was about, I believe, about twenty-five, thirty members on that team.
Okay, and our teachers voted for this as well, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's enough with my questions.
I, I have a follow-up question. So was it done in person or on, on the internet? Because we were locked down and, and people were kind of afraid to go out and do things. Wasn't it done o- over the, over the internet, the, the looking at this, uh, at this mat- at these materials, or was it done in person?
This was done in person in the month of February and March. So we just had it, usually you go through the phases, so you pilot it and then you put it out for public viewing. Um, so that just happened and that was public. And there were multiple days in which a community had the opportunity in which to come and view the materials.
Okay, pause the meeting for just a moment. I think we lost Christine Turner.
Christie Turner?
Uh, Exenia, can you give her a call? Thank you.
Yeah.
So we'll pa- pause the discussion for a moment.
Here I am, here I am.
Okay, alright.
Okay, okay, so what I was getting at was usually when that process happens, the board is notified and we are given the materials to, to look at it and view it ourselves. I do recall Ms. Turner saying earlier, um, she had no knowledge of it, and to be honest with you, I didn't either, and I was almost afraid to say something because I thought maybe I missed the memo. But, um, I do not remember this being brought to the board, um, given to the board, shown to the board, and that's usually how we do this. So, uh, again, I think for, I thank you for all the hard wo- work and all the input and everything, but there was a piece left out, and that's where the board gets to look at the materials ourselves and we get to check it out and see what we think about it, and then we move from there. So again, I do appreciate all the hard work and all the steps you took to bring it to the teachers and the students and the parents, but it didn't come to the board. And I think that's why we're trying to table this, so that we can kind of catch up. So anyway, thank you and thank you for all your work.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and have a vote?
Christie Akas?
Aye. No, wait, 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 I'm sorry. No, well, well, yeah.
No, yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're vote, voting to, to ta- table.
Yes, yes, to table. Thank you.
Yes.
Christie LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye.
Christie Turner?
Is she frozen?
Christie Turner?
Christie Turner, aye.
Christie Webster?
Christie Turner, aye.
Got it? Christie Webster?
Christie Webster, no.
Christie Benz?
Uh, well, my vote's gonna be whatever. Um, I'm gonna go ahead with now. Mo- mo- motion pass passes three, two. So that this will be ta- tabled.
Correct.
And on that, um, okay, Dr. Mitchell, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Are you, could, did you say you were gonna get us a bit?
Yes, I will get to, I will have drivers send out to your house, uh, starting tomorrow. It's not a problem.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. So let's go on to fif- fif- fifteen point zero zero seven, seven approval of the San Bern Fernadine Dino Count- Counties Su- Superintendent of Schools Agreement for Pre- Prevention and in Intervention Ser- Services Number twenty-one, twenty-two dash zero, zero, nine, five, and Pay Cal Health. Nine, ninety-five thousand, thousand, two hun- hundred doll- dollars. Uh, six thou- thousand, eight hun- hundred doll- dollars per school for, for fourteen schools. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Webster motions to approve.
Okay, can I get a sec- se- second?
So you try a second?
Okay, and we're o- open for dis- discuss- discussion?
Okay, I'd like to, to say something. Okay, so, uh, PBIS does, has been in our district for a long time. Was looking over the contract agreement. I did note that the date was the first day of July twenty twenty-one. So I was thinking to myself, why is it not dated, updated? Then I realized it's been in our district a while, unless that was some type of oversight on this contract. So, um, after looking at that date, I've been reminded that we have had PBS in our district for a while and that it is considered a framework, but we need systems of support and real strategies. Um, we've had it for years and nothing's changed. So, um, having heard that, what is going to change? If we've had this in our district for many years and we're not really seeing any results, why are we still doing the same thing without new, new systems? So if somebody can help me understand that one, um, that would really kind of help me in my decision here.
Um, well, number one is that this is, this is not something that you complete, where you finish. It's almost like character, like you don't just arrive one day. Secondly, you gotta think about staff turnover over the, over the years. Now, a lot of different leaders, a lot of different superintendents, a lot of these different si- principals, senior leaders, board, so on and so forth. And so, um, so every now and then you need a refresher and, and a reset. It, it, it boils down to fidelity. Um, we know that PBIS works when that, when the whole school community adopts and buys in and has ownership of it. Uh, there, there is no school that can be successful with only the administrators managing behavior because there's not enough administrators to manage fourteen, fifteen hundred kids. There is not. So PBIS sets the, sets its own for the entire school community to take accountability and responsibility for student, as staff behaviors. And so this is just something that we gotta revisit. It's almost like, you know, it's almost just like a, a refresher, a recommitment um, to, to the, to, to the fidelity of the program. So that, that would be my response, uh, Christie.
Okay, I agree with you. That makes a lot of sense. Uh, my pointing out that, the, the date of July first, twenty twenty-one, is that an oversight, or is that the way the contract is supposed to be? is that an oversight or is that the way the contract is supposed to be, uh, written out?
Good question. Dr. Joyce, is that something we need to make a quick adjustment on? You see what she's talking about?
I'm, I'm not seeing it. I can, I'm trying to look at right now. It, it should happen. Actually, the contract should go from tomorrow, um, until, um, the close of the school year, which is June thirtieth. So I apologize if I did not catch that.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out, because on the last page, it says the parties here have executed this agreement on the day and year first above written. So I wasn't sure, you know, if we were still with them or not. And then after reading that, I thought if we sign this without changing the dates or looking at them, we might have to r- retro pay them. So that's why I was a little concerned about the dates on the paperwork that I have. So yeah, if somebody can look at that and make sure that's, that's correct or we need to change it, that would make me feel a lot better. So thank you.
Can we adjust the motion on trustee?
Uh, okay, so let's, so how would I adjust that? Because yeah, I, I, I see, see it here on pa- page three.
A motion to approve the contract, uh, with, with adjusting the date to, uh, uh, March, start date of March sixteen.
Okay, so I need a, a mo- motion to approve with the, uh, uh, adjust, just a date. Be 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 begin, beginning date of March six, six, sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, I motion, motion. I'll motion to, to approve the new, um, reading of the date.
Okay. Madam President, Benz, I do have trustee Turner on speaker. Okay. She got back in. She's having a hard time, so she's back.
Okay, I'm sorry, I. I could go on and on and out. I don't know what's going on.
Okay, let, let, let's, her, her, her. Oh, okay, so we are, um.
Did you, did you hear my comment? Uh, President Benz, did you hear my comment? The presentation had, uh, March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. I saw that. I didn't say anything, but while we're changing dates, we might as well change that.
Okay, so we have to, uh, oh, ju- just the date of the con- contract to March sixth, sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. So that's the, the adjust- adjustment. I have a mo- mo- motion from Ek- Ekis. And I need a sec- second.
Webster seconds.
Okay, and now we need a vote.
Okay, also the presentation need to be dated.
Yes.
And in the event that later on, someone look at that, they'll see twenty-twenty-one, it's actually twenty-twenty-two, March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two on the presentation.
Got it.
Stated.
Got it.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Trustee Akas?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner? Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, aye.
Trustee Benz? Benz, I, the, uh, adjust, adjusted mo- motion approves, passes five zero, zero. With the cor- correction of the dates. Okay, now we go, go on to six, six- sixteen, su- su- superintendent tendents re- report, um, ev- events and future act- activities sig- so significant to the dis- district.
Thank you, trustee Benson. Given the hour, I'll keep my, uh, comments short. I did want to address our, uh, our, uh, courageous and bright students that spoke to the board tonight from Mesa Linda. I want to know that we hear you and we understand and acknowledge, uh, what you said to us. I do want to say that I already have a meeting scheduled with the Mesa Linda staff, the entire staff, this Friday. It was already scheduled um, to talk with staff about, um, the challenges of, of the campus, um, what we're looking for in a future leadership of the campus. And it really gets the input and feedback from staff. But, 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 but given tonight's event, what I stood, what I will do there is ask Exenia if you could set me up um, to go meet with that ASB class, so I can hear, um, some feedback and input from our students. And, uh, and ask, uh, administrators to set me up, not with just some ASB kids, but just some general body students as well. Cause sometimes, uh, I don't want to get skewed, uh, since, uh, by looking at one cross section of the school. So, um, thank, thank you for your comments and feedback. I also want to, um, give, give, um, some commendations to Dr. Dr. Hunt and her administrative team. Um, they, they're, they have, have led strongly in a, in a, in a tough environment. Um, and so I, I don't want to have assists like we're bashing, uh, the administrators. Um, they're working hard. I know they're working day in and day out to solve some very complex issues around school management, uh, classroom instruction, student behavior, um, buy-in, commitment, ownership for their campuses. So I want to commend their work. All of them are working hard on classified staff. I also want to commend our security staff over there. You have some great comments from our kids. And we all want the same thing. Uh, and what we need to do is just partner and grab hands together, talk it through and commit to, uh, not only just some expectations for student behavior, but also expectations for adult behavior. Cause that's where it starts, um, to making some commitments. Like when we all say this, yeah, this is the behavior that we expect in our house. And every adult commits to, to enforcing that, teaching that, being proactive with that. Over time, campuses change. Campuses do not change overnight. So we have some significant work ahead of us. I'm encouraged by, um, the comments from our students. I'm encouraged by the comments from our teachers tonight. And I will be on this campus on Friday, uh, to continue to gather information and to listen, uh, and put things in place. We also just, also just, the board just committed, thank you board for committing over two hundred fifty thousand dollars to put a school resource officer on the campus. Uh, thank you for that. And then I also want to announce that we have hired, uh, the thanks again board. At the last board meeting, you approved the contract with Chief of Police Joseph Paulino out of San Diego City. Uh, he's going to come in and train all of our middle school, um, security staff with, with the administrators for Saturdays. I think it's four, two, three, four, maybe five Saturdays, uh, beginning April ninth. So I want to make sure we invite the board, so you can say hi to our security staff. We're inviting all three middle schools of, uh, all middle school, um, administrative staff, as well as their security officer. We'll have a breakfast and a lunch. And we're going to really work on what does it take to secure, uh, safe and healthy, uh, learning environment for staff and students. We don't want our, our stats to be in fear. We don't want our kids to be in fear. And we need to fi- we need to figure this out. So we heard you loud and clear and we're working through those things. We just want to share those things, that those things are happening. And it's not, a- and we, we are aware. We are very deeply concerned, not only just for, um, their behaviors, but also for, for the health and welfare of our administrators as well. We're working hard, uh, to solve some complex problems. And so, thank you, uh, since looking forward to meeting you all in person and, and hearing a little bit more about your thoughts on how we can improve together, um, the, the house that we call Mesa Linda. So thanks so much. And those are my board, those are my, uh, comments, uh, trustee.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you. Okay, so that moves, moves us on to a germ- German, unless trustees have que- questions for Dr. Dr. Mid Mitchell?
Motion.
Okay, so let's slow our roll. Here we go. Um, I have a mo- mo- motion from trustee Ek- Ekis and a sec- second from trustee Webster. And can we get a vote, please? Yes, trustee Akas?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, aye.
Trustee Benz? Benz, I, the time is now ten forty-seven, seven. You all have a great night. Good, good night.
You too. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, trustee Turner.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Z.